All right, everyone. Welcome to the April 24th meeting of the Select Board. Please join me for the virtual meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded. The cameras, we are being broadcast on Facebook Live and also on local cable decaf. That will be upon demand. And just to let people know, if you have any questions, make sure that you raise your hand and we will call on you at the appropriate time. So the first item that we have up for our reorganization, every year after the election, the board reorganizes to elect a new chair and vice chair. So first, I want to say congratulations, Craig, for being reelected three more years.
Very excited.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And also, so the next thing would be for election of the chair.
I move that we nominate Adi Fulgenetti for the chair. This is my board.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb. Any comments or questions?
I'd defer that if I could.
Thank you. All right, so Barger and Lamb, all in favor?
Do we do a roll call or the roll call?
You typically do yes.
Okay.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, Fulgenetti.
I'm sorry. Barger, Fulgenetti.
Stacy Fulgenetti.
Adi Fulgenetti, Fulgenetti. All right. Nomination for vice chair.
I'll move to elect Craig Barger as vice chair.
Second.
Thank you very much.
So that's Lamb and Stacy. Roll call vote on that.
Barger, Barger.
Lamb, Barger.
Stacy Barger.
Fulgenetti, Barger.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have licenses and permits. The first one is a junk dealer license renewal for Emporium Retro and Interesting Collectibles at 447 Turnpike Street.
Sure, Dottie. So attached to your packet, there are three individual business licenses with Emporium of Retro and Interesting Collectibles, South Shore Gold on Foundry Street, and JV Enterprise on Walls Drive. These are existing junk dealer licenses in the community. For those unaware, junk dealer is just a name under the town's bylaws for secondhand resale or consignment. And so they are licensed May 1st through the end of April every year. These folks are in good standing and have applied for renewal. And Assistant Town Administrator of Land Charts recommending approval of these requests subject to any outstanding review by town departments. So I recommend the board approve without condition as a slate.
Any comments or questions from anyone on the board? We don't have anyone here from any of these agencies, correct?
No, we traditionally do not for just a renewal.
Okay. Perfect. Well, somebody would like to make a motion to renew the slated licenses as noted in the agenda?
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Yeah. Next, we have some one-day liquor licenses. The first one is for Stone Soup LLC doing business at Langwater Farm. Farm event fundraiser for the Blanche Ames Elementary Day, 2:15 Washington Street, May 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Kevin O'Dwyer from Stone Soup LLC has applied for this one-day beer and wine liquor license for the farm event/fundraiser. And an Easton Police Detail is not required. And did you want to come up and talk about it or?
Sure.
You can sit at the end of the table. The others are lined up. So just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the event.
My name's Caleb Dwyer. Kevin and I are the owners of Blanche Water Farm. And on May 13th, we're doing a fundraiser for Blanche Ames Elementary. So we're going to have wood fire pizza, hayrides, and planting activities for the kids. And hopefully, we'll have Shovel Town there as well.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And is there tickets or just?
Nope. Yeah, and proceeds of the day will go back to the Blanche Ames PAC.
All right. Perfect. Any questions?
No, I just think it's a great thing that you guys do all the time.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I know. We're excited. It's a nice, really nice new school, and I just love it there. And yeah, we're happy to support it.
Well, every day that there's an event at Langwater is a fun day. So lots of people attend, and we wish you good weather for it.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope so. Thank you.
Would somebody like to make a motion to award this one-day license?
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Good luck with your bid.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stone Hill College Retirement Party, 320 Washington Street, May 11th, 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. They applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for this party. An Easton Police Detail is not required. Can I get a motion to accept?
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Item 4, Planning and Zoning Board Alternate Appointment for Mickey Wolf with a Term Expiration of June 30th, 2024. We do have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Board, and Mickey has sent us an application. I just wanted to first just mention what the charge is of the Planning and Zoning Board. It's always good repressio for us and for people that aren't really quite familiar with it. So the mission of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board is to promote development which integrates environmental protection and community economic goals and furthers the welfare of people and the community by creating convenient, equitable, helpful, efficient, and attractive environments for present and future generations. The Planning and Zoning Board is responsible for preparing a comprehensive/master plan, proposing reviewing, holding hearings, and making recommendations on zoning bylaw changes, reviewing and acting on subdivisions, preliminary and definitive plans, reviewing and signing approval not required plans, acting as special permit granting authority, reviewing and acting on site plan reviews and approvals as set forth in the Town of Easton zoning regulations. The board consists of five members and an alternate appointed by the Select Board. So Mickey is familiar to us. She serves on some other boards and committees in town. And she, when she, the question on the application is outline any relevant education or experience, she said she's familiar with how municipalities work because of her job. She's been an active volunteer in Easton Circle since she moved here in 2014. As a renter in town, it's predominantly single-family housing. I enjoy being on a board that has a direct impact on the future of the town. Different viewpoints help to make a strong town and diverse welcoming community. I think that this is really important to show that there's a lot of diversity in our community, and I'm happy to see people that are not necessarily homeowners that will say that they rent and they want to have a voice at the table. I think it's really important for us. So I'm really happy that Mickey threw her name in the ring. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Mickey?
I think that's good. She's a good choice for the committee.
Agreed.
Absolutely. Really, thank her for stepping up to play this really important role.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to appoint Mickey? And this will be a first, second, and a roll call vote.
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, Wolf.
Lamb, Wolf.
Stacy Wolf.
And Fulgenetti Wolf. And so the next, we have the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team appointment of Amanda Carlson. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have added for Mickey Wolf, the term expiration on that is June 30th, 2024. Craig, I'm going to amend the motion to include that, and let's just take another vote just for.
Barger, Wolf.
Lamb, Wolf.
Stacy Wolf.
And Fulgenetti Wolf. So the next one for the cultural district management. So this is a really long one. I'm just going to give some of the highlights of it. The cultural districts initiative was authorized by an act of the Massachusetts State Legislature in 2010. A cultural district is a specific geographical area in a city or town with a concentration of cultural facilities, activities, and assets. It's a walkable, compact area easily identifiable to visitors and residents, and serves as a center of cultural, artistic, and economic activity. So the Select Board endorsed this. Some of the missions of what we try to do is to attract artists and cultural enterprises, encourage business and job development, establish the district as a tourist destination, preserve and reuse historic buildings, enhance property values, and foster local cultural development. So the cultural district starts up in the area where Oaks Ames Hall is, goes all the way down to Langwater Farm. All the businesses and amenities, the Governor Ames Estate, the Shovel Town Brewery, the restaurants on Main Street, are all part of the cultural district. And the management partnership team meets to come up with the ideas on how to enhance all of these things that I just talked about. So Amanda Carlson has volunteered. In the actual bylaws of who we seek to bring on as a member, we need to have artists and people in arts and culture. So I was really happy to see that she is an artist living in Easton. She's been making work in Easton since 2014 and has a BFA in photography from the Massachusetts College of Art and Design and is interested in being more involved in the community. So just the right candidate that we were looking for.
Absolutely.
So if somebody would like to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Amanda Carlson to the Eastland Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb. Roll call vote on that?
I would just suggest the board include the term expiration.
With the term expiration of June 30th, 2023.
Barger, Carlson.
Lamb, Carlson.
Stacy Carlson.
And Fulgenetti Carlson. Excellent. The next item, Item 6, is vote for acceptance of gifts to the fire department from the Eastern Charitable Trust and Eastern Festival. We have a letter in our packet. The Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, has received a donation of $10,000 from the Eastern Festival of Trees. This organization has been very generous to the CERT team over the years, and we're very grateful for their continued support. And the Select Board does have to accept any kinds of gifts or donations, so that's why it comes before us. But it's also a great opportunity to publicly thank the people and organizations that do contribute and express their appreciation to our departments, particularly the first responders. So thank you very much to the Eastern Charitable Trust. They're an amazing organization. They usually support a handful of different organizations every year with the Festival of Trees, and they're very generous to the community.
That's an incredible gift. Absolutely incredible.
Very generous donation. A lot of money.
So if somebody would like to make a motion to accept the gift?
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Next, discussion and vote intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Easton and the Town of Acushnet for fire department apparatus maintenance services. Connor?
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. So Chief Alexander couldn't be here tonight. He and Chief Boone are busy this week. They have their budget hearings on Wednesday, but they have Citizens Academy tonight. So just to kind of refresh, the fire department in-house mechanic services for their apparatus about a year and a half ago. And in addition to providing that service with a civilian mechanic in Easton for our apparatus, I'm sorry, large spider. We are able to execute intermunicipal agreements with neighboring and regional communities who can send their apparatus to Easton when our mechanic has time to perform that work for those communities for a fee that generates revenue that Easton can use to maintain its fleet. So it's been a great program. The board has authorized IMAs of this type with other communities, including West Bridgewater and Rehoboth. The form is identical to those, and the chief is recommending approval, and so do I.
Excellent. Any comments or questions from the board?
I think it's a great opportunity for us. I'm very pleased that the chief came up with this idea.
Agreed. Seems to be getting some, it's getting very popular with other communities.
It is.
We're not hitting capacity.
Not yet. We won't overburden the department for the sake of being a good neighbor, but it's a really good value. The rate is advantageous for Easton, and that's a profit, as you could call it, for us. I mean, we're able to be more responsive in a lot of circumstances than the private sector can be right now on specialized mechanic work at a much better rate.
Fantastic.
Well, I think our public services respond with other communities quite often. They have quite a network and strong relationships as they help each other out. So this is just one other way that they can, you know, support each other because some of the smaller towns wouldn't be able to do this on their own, so.
And this is the fourth, this will be the fourth town that we're, that's impressive. It's impressive.
In a short period of time, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is there a vote language in the packet that I'm missing or?
I didn't see anything.
Nothing particular. Just a vote to execute the intermunicipal agreement with Acushnet would be sufficient if the board desires.
So I'll move Barger. Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, a discussion and vote on PCD 2023-6, BSC Group for the Sam Wright Field Wetland and Flood Plane Restoration Project.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. In your packet, there is a contract along with a cover memo from the town's land use and environmental planner, Jennifer Colino, explaining the intent of this project. So as the board may recall, previously under the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, which is a climate change resiliency-focused state grant program that has allocated funds to municipalities to both plan and then start implementing resiliency efforts of a community, the Conservation Commission has done a first portion of wetland restoration of Sam Wright Field. They've done about 23,000 square feet of work there, removing concrete structures and doing some grading and wetland restoration. This is an engineering contract that would be funded through earmarked budget dollars from the state that were requested and successfully funded on our behalf by Representative Carol Dougherty, and will provide additional engineering and design prep for future phases of wetland and flood plane restoration in, I believe, a 100,000 square foot area as part of our ongoing climate resiliency efforts. So Conservation Commission is requesting that the Select Board execute this. Again, this is funded with state grant funds, and I agree with their recommendation.
Excellent. Any comments or questions?
Once again, thanks to Representative Dougherty for proposing it and getting it passed. I move to approve the PCD 2023-06 contract with BSC Group for the Sam Wright Field Wetlands Flood Plane Restoration Project in the amount of $78,680.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. This is going to be a quick part of the meeting. Town administrator notes, Connor?
I believe we skipped a minute.
Oh, minutes of April 10th, 2023?
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Town administrator notes?
Sure. So just want to note, there was a lot of good community activity going on this weekend on Earth Day. We had Household Hazardous Waste Day at Public Works. There was Drug Takeback Day. A bunch of businesses also had their own cleanups. We have a town election. So I just want to say thank you to all the staff coming in on the weekend to make those events possible, as well as the volunteers in the community and the public for participating and for voting.
Thank you, Connor. And Select Board notes, anybody have any comments?
I just want to thank the voters of Easton for giving me the opportunity to serve for another three years. I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with my colleagues.
Glad to have you, Craig.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you for a couple more years, anyway.
Yes, same.
All right. Mark, any updates?
No, I have none.
None for me tonight.
Okay. I just would encourage people, I say this often, to sign up for the town crier. It's a weekly email blast that comes out and gives a lot of great information on what's happening in the town. So I just called it up, and I can tell you that real estate and personal property tax bills are due May 1st. That's coming up this week. And also just to remind people about water restrictions. We're in a Phase 3 water restriction in place. So if you go onto the town's website and social media, you'll see even-numbered properties are restricted to Mondays between 5:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. Odd-numbered properties will be restricted Tuesday, 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. These restrictions are needed to comply with our water withdrawal permit and to ensure adequate supply during the construction of the PFAS and iron and manganese treatment facilities. We ask our residents to follow along the website and to comply with these regulations that we're asking. It does make a big difference. And with that, do I want to adjourn this meet, I mean, adjourn this meeting, Connor? And then?
I would take a recess.
Take a recess?
Until 7:00 p.m., when the Finance Committee will join us because that's what's listed on the agenda. I would keep it to that time.
Okay. So as Connor said, we are going to take a recess, and we will come back at 7:00. Thank you, everyone.
Just want to let you know that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on Facebook. So we will get right into it. Seven o'clock, the Select Board and Finance Committee, we're going to be reviewing some budgets. So Connor, do you want to lead us into this?
Sure, thank you, Dottie. And thank you to the Select Board and everyone.
I'm sorry, I'm talking too fast again. We need the Finance Committee to open their meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so as you can do a roll call as per usual for this, or do we just have to bring up one?
You do on Zoom. You don't have, you could just call the meeting to order because you're here.
Guys, if I'm including calling the Finance Committee meeting to order and not making you all say your names out loud, theoretically by now everyone knows you're here. So with that, we'll hand it back over to Connor.
Thank you. So thank you all for being here. So under the town's charter, before the annual town meeting in May every year, the Select Board and Finance Committee have to have joint meetings to review the proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. In this case, it's fiscal '24. I have on screen a quite long agenda for all of us tonight and Wednesday. So for a few years now, we have been consolidating all the budget reviews, having all the departments come in and give their presentations to both boards in a joint meeting, try and be more efficient with everyone's time. We split it up into two nights so that it's a little bit more manageable. And to start tonight, just want to give a quick update of where the budget, the overall operating budget stands. Happy to report that since our previous meetings, starting in February and again in March, the operating budget for the coming fiscal year is balanced. So what we have is a $103,484,768 budget. That's including enterprise funds, five and a quarter percent increase over the past fiscal year. When we started this process, we had a deficit of about one and a half million. That got shaved down to just under a million. And since that last update in March, we've eliminated that deficit with some modest adjustments on the revenue side, but mostly through reductions to operating budget requests on the town and school side. So for fiscal '24, it's a mostly level service budget. It strives to maintain our most essential services, but it's not necessarily able to make progress in other areas that we know we need to pursue opportunities for improvement in just due to recurring and very familiar revenue constraints, particularly in the area of state aid. We collectively, with the departments, after the last budget change memo, weighed those service needs against the meager growth to state revenue, as well as the reality that we will be working with a multi-year phase out of federal financial support stemming from the pandemic, particularly in fiscal '24, '5, and '6. So in doing so, we've struck a balance of maintaining service capacity while preserving our reserve position as we head into those years when we phase those funds out. So in the change memo, which everyone was provided, there's a table that just kind of goes through each of these categories and won't read through it verbatim because we have a long night, showing where we made that progress since the last budget. I think this slide is more instructive. So we started, as I said, with a one and a half million dollar deficit, got down to just under a million, and since then, cut 962,000 of that deficit away. 211,000 of that was through adjustments to state aid. So since the last meeting, the House Ways and Means Committee, the state level has proposed their fiscal '24 budget. They have proposed restoring minimum aid to $60 per pupil, which is what it was in fiscal '23. We continue to advocate for at least $100 per pupil, which is also the Mass Municipals Association, I believe, Mass Association of School Committee, and Superintendent's position as well. Because although 60 is helpful, it's much better than 30, you still are looking at a roughly $200,000 increase in state revenue for a $47 million school district, which is not sustainable. But that did help us close the gap. It added about 100,000 to the revenue pot, part of that 200,000 of improvements there. And we eliminated about three quarters of a million of that revised deficit through reductions to operating budget requests from the town and school department. And so on the right, you can see a pie graph of, from the get-go, about one and a half million, 1.2 million of the progress we made towards eliminating the shortfall was through reducing budget requests, both operating and fixed costs. And about $284,000 of that progress was through improvements to revenue. This is just a summary of where we stand comparative to the past year. Again, I won't go through each of it because you've received it before. Taxation continues to grow by two and a half percent, plus new growth. State aid at 2.8, better than previous years, although against the kind of fixed cost increases we're seeing and just the cost of doing business, not necessarily sufficient. Local receipts, 5.8 percent, that's been a bright spot. But just because of the fact that you're working with a smaller revenue category, you know, that is progress, but it doesn't necessarily close all of those gaps. Other financing sources, which includes reserves, has been cut by 5 percent. That's part of our planned phase out of federal funds. So we're reducing the amount of one-time money in this budget compared to last year to continue to basically take small steps towards the phase out of these programs so that we don't have fiscal cliffs. So when you look at general fund only, it's a pretty modest 3.29% increase. Enterprise funds are growing quite substantially. Just as a reminder, enterprise funds include business-like activities. So these are trash and recycling programs, water, sewer. And so those are growing substantially, mostly in sewer and water. Sewer, based on additional users coming online in the districts that we've built in the past 10 years, and water to offset the debt service for constructing roughly $26 million of treatment plants for PFOS iron and manganese. Going through just a high-level overview of expenses, and again, each one of all the town and school departments, and we'll also go through fixed costs, so won't belabor any of them. But we, outside of county and state assessments and the reduction to regional school assessments, nothing here is really out of the ordinary. County and state assessments is a reflection of increased charter school tuition sending costs. And again, with the balanced budget, you end up in a place of a 3.29% increase to the general fund. And enterprise funds are offset by increased fees. You get the balanced budget of $103,484,000. So from here, the next steps between now and July 1st, we have two nights of our budget review collectively, where we'll hear from all the departments in detail on their operating position and what they're looking to do next year. On Wednesday, you'll review with me the proposed capital budget for the coming fiscal year. And that evening will end with myself and the Finance Director seeking votes of recommendation from the Finance Committee and the Select Board on the operating budget, as well as the capital budget. We'll all go to town meeting on Monday, May 15th, and seek approval for operating capital and CPA budgets. And if those are adopted, they'll go into effect in July. So that's a summary of the change memo. I'm happy to answer any questions about those broader financial indicators, if anyone has any, before we get into the department-level presentations.
Any questions from the Finance Committee? Any questions, comments from the board? Any questions, comments from the public? All right, Connor, I think we can move on.
Ready.
So we are going to have several departments come up. I presume they're going to sit at this table up here?
They are, yes, they should have led with that. So laptop up here has the consolidated presentation of anyone's materials. If you had speaking notes in there that you gave to Mike, they'll be there. And first up, we have Southeastern Regional Schools.
Thanks for being here tonight. We haven't had the chance to meet in person yet, so it's great to have you here. For your first ever meeting with us.
Well, I got to meet a lot of the department ads early on in my tenure. So for those of you I haven't met, my name is Holly McLannan. I am the Superintendent at Southeastern, and I am joined by Mark Morris, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration. So we have a brief presentation. I know you have a lot on your agenda, but please feel free to interrupt. So we'll start with just a summary of our FY '24 budget. We have a base budget of just over, just under $35 million. That is our per pupil cost multiplied by our October 1st enrollment. And that's comprised of just over $22 million in state aid, leaving $12.65 million in local assessments. And to that, we have added our regional transportation. As you know, the state is supposed to reimburse us for 100% of regional transportation costs. They have never actually done that. So we base what we think our reimbursement is going to be next year on our actual reimbursement this year. So that leaves us $715,000, give or take, in local assessments. And then on top of that, we have our capital expenditures that help us maintain our buildings, pay the debt service on our MSBA project. We have, for at least 10 or 12 years, maintained that assessment to our communities at $192,000. So we have offset some of those costs from E and D to keep that number at 192,000, which brings us to our subtotal of just over, just under $37 million. And then on top of that, we have our bond payment for our Performing Arts Center. We are paying our OPEB liability, but we're using funds from E and D without local assessments to do that. So that leaves the local assessments at just over $14 million. Any questions on the summary?
No.
And this is just to give you a sense of, you know, student enrollment over time. Last year, we did have a little bit of a dip from Easton that's uncharacteristic. It's good for you from a budget standpoint because you'll see a reduction in your assessment from us. But it is unusual, and we don't expect that trend to last. Just looking at enrollment for the coming school year, for your FY '25, we do look at, we think we're going to be either at a level enrollment for Easton or an increase of up to five students, just for some long-term planning. And then again, this is just to show you the assessments by community and what each town's assessment is made up of. As you can see, Easton is 4.6% of our student population, and I won't belabor all the numbers there. But then, in the bottom chart here, you will see that your assessment this year is down $217,684 over last year, due primarily to the decrease in enrollment of 17 students. As you know, each of our students costs exactly the same for Southeastern to educate, just over $22,000. But this chart is just to show you which portion of that Mansfield pays versus the portion that a Mansfield student is paid through state aid. And that's just a function of the Chapter 70 formula. And then finally, we understand that our sending communities have a lot of pressures on their finances. Many of our communities are seeing decreased enrollment in their own school districts while special education costs are going through the roof and transportation costs are going up. So we have, for the last 15, 20 years, been committed to operating at the minimum foundation budget that the state requires us to operate at so that we can be responsible financial partners to each of our sending communities. And that's what we're going to do again this year. And then the remainder of the slides are really just there for your information. They're really about Easton and Easton's assessment and Easton's school population. So you can review those at your leisure. Does anyone have any questions from Mark or myself?
Connor, do we have a copy of this?
We'll send a copy of the PowerPoint out to everyone following the meeting.
We'll start with the Finance Committee.
Anyone in the Finance Committee have any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Thank you for your presentation. So you had 17 less students this year. Is that because we had 17, you know, fewer students applying, or the requirements were higher for entry?
So we were actually just talking about that today, that we really are digging into the data to see what happened. I will tell you, there were probably a couple of factors. Last year, we had an extraordinarily high number of applications. We had over 1,600 applications, and we could only admit 400 students. So competition last year was extremely high. So the number of applications we received from Easton students was about the same, but the number of enrolled students was down. Some of that could be because the requirements were so high, but another part of that could be that every student who's offered admission at Southeastern does not accept. So they may have other options that they were exploring.
Thank you.
Anyone else on our side?
Any questions on the Select Board side? I can't see everybody's face, so.
I would just like to add that Superintendent McLannan's been a wonderful partner for the town since starting. We get to meet early on, I believe, although I think you had kind of a revolving door of folks meeting to, you know, get to know you and build a relationship. Regional School has been great to work with. Obviously, we appreciate, although some of it's formula-driven, part of helping eliminate our deficit was a reduction in the assessment this year, which was very helpful. And it's also on the other side of the ledger as well that one of the increases to local receipts is a revenue share agreement with the regional school for the SRO program, which funds a large majority of the cost of that salary, which is an initiative that the chief and superintendent felt strongly about restarting and got to work on that right away and implemented it. So we really appreciate it, and we look forward to keeping, working with you.
Well, thank you. And we appreciate the relationship we have with the town of Easton, and we do have a wonderful collaborative relationship with Chief Boone. I'm very, very pleased to have an SRO back at Southeastern. So thank you to everyone who helped make that happen.
And I'll just throw in my two cents. You know, the vocational school, two of my brothers went there back in the day, and it's completely different. You'd never know it was the same school. It used to be where you went if you wanted to be a carpenter or a plumber or an electrician. And now the variety of vocational opportunities there is just really cutting-edge. I had the pleasure to be at your performing arts studio this year during the grand opening, and I got lost on my way out of the school. So I asked a student, which way do I get to the door? And she said to a teacher in the hall, "May I escort her out?" So we had a chat as we were going through, and this young student was amazing. She, I said, "I don't know what it is you're going to be doing, but you're going to do the best at it," because she was just so engaging. She actually was a participant in the performing arts. And she just, she was like an ambassador, the way that she spoke about the school. And I have talked to other students there and other parents, and they really, they love it there. It's a wonderful place. The new performing arts studio is suited The new performing arts studio is just amazing. And I think that in context to how you've worked with the town, I know that you're very fiscally responsible. I'm glad to see that continue through. It's hard. It's hard to balance all these budgets and to be able to continue to have great offerings. I know that there is such a demand for people in these different vocations, and the governor Baker had made a priority to be down at the tech for many occasions, bringing funding and great opportunities. So glad to see it continuing to move forward, and really thank you for everything you do to support our community.
Thank you. And we're happy to give anyone a tour anytime you want to come down. And we have our boot and shovel student restaurant that has the best meals in town for less than $10. So join us anytime.
And those, are those on Tuesdays?
It's Tuesday through Friday.
Oh, okay, great. Excellent. Wish it, share that on social media. But then the people who go will probably be like, "Why is it so crowded? Who's telling everyone about this?" Well, thank you very much. It's great to meet you.
All right. Have a good night.
So for the next budget, we typically do not invite the superintendent of Bristol County Agricultural because the assessment is so minor in the scheme of our budget. And the change here is, again, usually enrollment-driven. We have, I think, in the single digits of students enrolled, nine. And most of this is also, it's a reflection of the enrollment and the MSBA assessment to the communities. So this is treated as a fixed cost. It's not subject to appropriation, I don't believe it needs to. Or it is. It is subject to appropriation, but it is a fixed cost that we don't have direct control over. So it's a $6,200 increase.
So as the chair of the select board, I sit on the Bristol County advisory, and our one time that we meet a year is to vote on the Bristol County budget, which includes the agricultural school. And the superintendent does come in and do a presentation of it. And so I've been involved in that since they were talking first, accepted into the MSBA. Usually, the MSBA program will only support the renovation or the rebuild of one school. And they had 11 buildings on campus. I believe it was 11, but around 11 buildings that they needed renovated. And if you saw what it looked like before, it was really in tough, tough shape. And the before and after is just incredible. But some of the offerings that they have there, the agricultural services in Massachusetts are shockingly more in demand than you would expect. And it's not just, you know, cows and livestock and how to care for that. It's veterinary services, landscape architecture, all kinds of amazing things, farming included as well. But they did a really great job and got a lot of bang for their buck with that. So they have open houses from time to time. We do only have a few students that go there, but it's definitely an asset to those that do. And they did a really good job keeping those prices and keeping the budget in order for that. So somebody is taking a peek at it from here. And if anybody does want to go down and see the school, definitely make an, you know, make an arrangement to get down there. But it's really beautiful, beautiful school.
Donnie, you do have a quick question. Is the assessment still $22,000 per student at Bristol as it is at Southeastern?
I don't think it's the same. I'm not sure. Is it?
No, the per pupil cost is not a fixed figure.
Right.
It's not?
No. All right. Onto the next one.
Next up, we have the Ames Street Library. And I apologize, I shouldn't blend with this. Everyone received a copy of the line item detail of personnel and expense budgets. So as we go through, I'll let you know what those are. So this is page 59 of your line item detail.
Hi, Ian.
Hello.
Good to have you all back here.
Thank you. Hopefully, this doesn't drop. It drops like three times a day. Thank you for having me. I am Ian Dunbar, the executive director of the Ames Street Library. The Ames Street Library is Easton's public library. Our mission is to serve the educational, entertainment, and growth needs of the community through lending materials and free programming services. This year, we are on trend for fiscal year '23 so far to, rising statistics since the COVID, sorry. I'm getting nervous. Everything is on the up terms in terms of circulations, programs, circulations. We are consistently in the top 10 within the sales library network of about 70 public libraries. Everybody took a hit during COVID, but we're all rising at the same rate. We've had over 800 programs this year free to the public with about 7,600 attendees to those programs, lent out about 600 museum passes, have been visited by just shy of 60,000 people this fiscal year thus far. Our computer and Wi-Fi use is over 12,000, which has already surpassed last year's total. So that includes computers in the building as well as wireless. We supply databases for educational needs, so you can learn new programs or courses, and that has been used almost 8,000 times. And we have a total of 10,586 registered borrowers. The state requires a municipal appropriations requirement based on the previous three fiscal years, times 2.5%, which totals out to be $583,899. The library's request of $595,860 is an increase to offset some deficits we're seeing in some of our endowment payments due to market forces. We're not anticipating too much of a drop, but we're trying to be conservative in that they're not going to get higher as they were previously. As well as kind of support the increased costs of utilities, gas and fuel, which has hit us hard with the two buildings and the garden. We're also planning on bringing on a new part-time employee, a ESOL specialist. The library has been offering ESOL programs for about seven years now, and it's all run by a volunteer. The library's been supporting it with materials and Zoom through COVID. And at this point in time, she does tremendous work and works about 20 hours a week that we want to bring onto payroll to fully support it and bring it in part of the library. So the increase is for that and for the increase in utility costs plus, I'm hoping to get an increase for the library standards of cost of living for the rest of the staff of about 2.5% COLA, which historically it has been low because of, we don't know what the market's going to do with our endowment, so we try to keep things conservative, and we don't want to overpromise what we have. But the staff deserves it, just because the numbers are great and they all work very The, most of our budgets are actually expenditures are going to be level funding. I have moved things around a little bit. But materials budget will remain the same, about $85,000. We were required to spend so much money by the state to keep, be eligible for state aid. So that is factored into that above some, that is based on the municipal appropriation. And I'm also going to, trying to throw more money into our programming budget by just a third, which the program budget right now is about $5,000. So I'm just trying to increase that up a few thousand dollars, because as I said, we've had just, you know, 7,500 people come to our programming, and my youth services staff has already blown through their budget. So they could be doing a whole lot more in serving the community if they had a little bit more to work with. But I have balanced that by reducing some other line items, mainly just COVID precaution things. Our cleaning budget was jumped up. I'm lowering that back down to pre-COVID standards, which balance out. I have dropped some services for administrative and HR things, which thankfully the state is providing for free during this now, so that saves us some money. So in all, the line items are about the same, except for what I said in terms of bringing staff in utilities. So requires a little bit more funds. Because of the unique nature of the library, since we are a private corporation with support of the town, which we greatly benefit, the, Easton's municipal per capita expenditure for the library is $22.69 per person. The average in the 25,000 to 29,999 population group of 20 municipalities is a little bit more than double that, $46.84. So we are comparable. We are actually slightly higher than that with the library's endowments paying for it and other supports. The equivalency of initial things would be about $58.67, which puts us in like the top seven of those 20, when in reality, the taxpayer is playing in the lowest out of them. So we are internally grateful for your support. We cannot do it, and what we do without the town's support for it, even with what we have. And we hope to be able to continue the partnership in serving the community moving forward.
Great. Thank you. We'll go over to the finance committee, comments and questions.
I have one question.
Yes.
Not necessarily about budgets, but it's about programs. Just because we have the, hopefully, the attention of more people in the town, is there any, are you guys still recruiting or looking for people to provide programming? If anyone has a volunteer interest or anything like that, that they could, they could reach out and contact someone at the library to suggest?
Yes, we are always looking for anyone interested. That's generally how things come. They'll give us a call or an email. You can email myself or the assistant director, Jessica Block, and we can coordinate things. We're looking for anyone with any passion or something to teach. We get obviously a lot of local authors that will come in and discuss their books. But we have people that are, we had a gentleman speak about the Hubble telescope as he did some work some years ago, and it was just his personal experience. We'll have people come and talk about, the local business across the street did a presentation on flower arrangements. Anything somebody's passionate about, we will definitely accommodate, and we appreciate it, because that's most of what we function on in terms of programming. But then in the summer, which the increase in budgets for, is we have our big summer reading programming things for the kids, where we have concerts and, you know, animal presentations and musicians, things to really involve the community. And we're also going to continue our summer concert program out in the garden to really utilize the space and have a nice positive thing for the community to go out with. Most of the time, we try to get by with modest honorariums, but some things we really want to spend the money on just to have a big impact.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Anyone else on our side? Any questions?
So I just want to understand this a little bit better, because you talked about some great things with the part-time employee, more money towards programming, increased utility costs and all this, and I see an increase of only 10 grand. And is it that because you dropped the COVID cleaning and then the state picked up? So there's only a net increase of $10,000 to the budget?
So that is the, mostly, yes. I'm anticipating about $30,000 increase in our total operating budget of about $1,431,470. This is actually wrong. I apologize. That's not the right spreadsheet. It increased so much that because of the library endowments, even though we're anticipating some of the larger ones to be pretty much level, other sources of revenue for the library, including state aid, will slightly increase. Some other investments will slightly go up. But the library has resumed accepting fines for late payments, so that's just increased money coming in. We're having, we're trying to utilize, increase it as for private events to bring in some more income that way as well. So we're able to offset some of it. So that's why our ask for the town is only 10,000 more, where we're anticipating the actual expenditures to be about $30,000 more.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else over here? Over here, guys?
Anybody on the select board, comments or questions?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
Ian, that the library is a gem in its town. And I use it, my wife uses it, so my kids used to use it too, so no longer live in town. So I just really appreciate the library.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate everyone coming in.
And I'll say that as chair of the Sheville Town Cultural District, I will get the opportunity and the pleasure to work with Ian and Jessica on a number of different things. And the amount of programs that you have there for all ages, all cultures, and very thoughtful and intentional about that programming and the offerings, especially to keep it free and available to people, it's really incredible. And I'd really suggest to people to get on their email list, or if you're on social media, follow them on social media. There's something for everyone all the time, nothing boring. So you're always on your toes over there, and you're doing a great job. You had big shoes to fill.
Thank you, yes. Only one shoe right now.
But we really appreciate the smooth transition, if you will.
Thank you.
And we enjoy working with you and having you as a strong partner.
Yeah, I enjoy working with the town as well. It's great support all around.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have the town clerk, Danielle Secard, and in the line item budget, her operations are page 21.
Hello. Danielle? Yeah? Hello. As Connor said, for those who don't know me, my name is Danielle Secard. I am the town clerk. I've been a town clerk for about 13 years and the pleasure of being here in Easton for about six years now. Some of the things that my office does for those who don't come in there regularly can be kind of in a broad way summarized in five different ways. Elections and town meetings. Obviously, this is going to have the most significant impact when we're talking about budgets from year to year, as the number of elections and town meetings will change from year to year. The second category is vital records. That's the births, deaths, and marriages. Those are permanent records. We're also the records access officer, so we'll be fielding, responding, and recording public records requests. And then we're the keeper of the records, so permanent records. We also are the keeper of the town seal. We do archival management. We're also in charge of public administration. All of you folks here know what I'm talking about for that. That's your compliance for state ethics, open meeting law. That's the appoint, the posting of agendas, minutes, public hearings, and all of those things alike. And licensing, such as dog licenses, business certificates, yard sales, raffle permits, underground storage. And that's, like I said, a broad kind of overview of what we do in the office. The town clerk's office consists of three full-time employees, myself, an assistant town clerk, and our records manager. We also have one part-time employee who is 21 hours a week, goes up to 35 hours a week during election cycles for us, and that's a position that started in 2021. It's been really helpful to kind of meeting our objectives in the office. We also use three to four senior tax work-off participants each year. We have a lot of filing, a lot of records, keeping of that. So that's another 375 to 500 hours of support that our office uses each year as well. Some of the challenges over the last few years for us have really had to do with the changes in election laws between COVID and 2020, with all of the changes that happened then. And then the acts of 22 Chapter 92, which is called the Votes Act, made permanent a lot of those COVID changes. Things such as no excuse vote by mail, mailing of postcards to all registered voters before every single state election, expanding early voting in person from where there was some primaries where there was no early voting in person to now having seven full days, to just the 10 business days prior to a November election, to including two weekend elections. So there's been a vast expansion of early voting in person. They've also extended, as part of the Votes Act, the ability to return your ballots after a November election. Three days after the election, we're still collecting ballots as long as they are postmarked appropriately. And then advanced tabulation. Advanced tabulation, in my opinion, is a necessity because of the robust response that we're getting in vote by mail and early voted ballots. If we tried to manage that and the election day on busy elections, it would be a problem, it'd be problematic. So going into 2024, biggest challenge is that our office is going to have, and I'm talking a calendar year, is it is a presidential election year. So it will span over two fiscal years, starting off with, in March, the first election being the presidential primary. And then we'll have a local election. And then obviously, in the fall of 2024, we would have the state primary and the presidential election. So we've been doing a lot to kind of prepare for that in this, what I would call, an off-election year for us. And we have made some changes. If you've been into the town hall, you've seen the design layout. A lot of that has to do with being able to provide more space for all the different volunteers and election workers that will come in and help us actually administer the elections during these every other election years. We've also started We've also started to clean out and prepare one of the rooms from the food pantry so that we don't have to take over the Colleen Corona boardroom for the entire year for early voting in person and advance mailing house, putting together all of the vote by mail packets. So our attempt will be to use there. So we're really utilizing the time this year to prepare for next year. Some of the highlights in services, and I like data, so I'm going to throw a couple of data things out. From FY twenty-two to, from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two, we've generated an increased fees of fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which represents a fifteen percent increase. That specifically represents the collection of licensing fees and certified copies and directly kind of shows how much of an increase that we, we've been having as far as circulation and people coming in. In the realm of certified copies of vital records, we have seen a twenty-nine percent increase of five hundred and sixty-eight more in two thousand twenty-two than we did in two thousand twenty-one. Posting of agendas and minutes and public hearings, we've seen an eight percent increase over two thousand twenty-one. And every year, we see an increase in our dog licensing. Since I've been here, that increase has been eighty-two percent over those six years, but it's about five percent each year that we're continuing to see that, and that's efforts of my staff and the software that we've implemented in that time period. So some notable changes to next year's budget, you're going to see in the staff salaries, all of those are contractual obligations. You'll see for overtime poll workers, town meeting and elections expenses, that's again directly reflective on the number of elections that we have. FY twenty-three had three elections. That was the state primary, the state general election, and our town election, but that included three early voting in person weeks. FY twenty-four, not calendar twenty-four, will have two elections, and that's the presidential primary and the town election with only one week of early voting in person. You'll see a slight increase, actually, it's a large increase considering the dollar amount under training. We will be sending the assistant town clerk to NEMC, that's the New England Institute of Municipal Clerks Institute, for training. That's a three-year program, and we do have a new assistant that's starting in May, and so she will be going to participate in that. There's a modest increase in under records management. That's for monthly shredded bills. It's gone up just slightly. And then you'll see in the dues category also a slight increase, and that's because my notary stuff is come, it's good for seven years and it's due to expire. So that's my overview presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that anybody might have.
Anyone else say?
I do, and it may just be my ignorance. So your assistant department head from fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-three, and it's zero cost?
So they've separated it out. It used to be the assistant department head was listed under clerical salary, so there was two inside of that, and I believe this is the first year that that's being separated.
Thank you.
I just had one quick question about, I honestly, the way you just categorized it, made me realize it the first time. I always assumed that early voting or expansion of early voting would actually be potentially a net cost savings, but it's not because of the added staff that has to process all of that.
Correct.
And I would assume.
And manned, and manned, check-in, check-out, yep.
Check-in, et cetera. And am I wrong in categorizing that it's actually less expensive to do it all on election day, because you obviously already have the staff and associated content there? Not that I'm saying early voting's bad, I'm not saying that at all, I'm a big fan, but...
Absolutely, without a doubt. Yeah, no, there's three, you know, the expansion provided lots of voter options, which are obviously wonderful.
Right.
Spreading it out really creates multiple buckets of responsibility, so we're preparing for a thirteen-hour election day at the same time running fourteen days straight for a presidential election or any November elections of early voting in person. And then the eight weeks prior to that is all the vote by mail ballots.
And is the vote, sorry, go.
No, the vote by mail is also done. I mean, we produce about seven, between five and seven thousand vote by mail packages, and it's literally a mailing house.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was, that's my, that's my gap of knowledge, because I was always assuming that like that vote by mail was taking some of the edge off, but I never thought about the processing side of it on the back end, the preamble to it, to build all those packets.
And Danielle, if I correctly, but wrong, but different states have implemented vote by mail differently, and there are different manners to implement it in Massachusetts. The state sends out that postcard that we all get, but then it goes back to your local town hall, which usually has somewhere between two and four full-time employees who basically need to bring in an army of poll workers to run eight-hour shifts to, you know, mail thousands of these envelopes.
In some states, as you said, Connor, do do that at the state level, but that is not the case.
Correct, that's not the case here. And so you end up with in these biannual cycles where you have, I think, is it, how much time is off between the primary and the proper election, a couple, is it a month?
We can breathe for about four days before the next round of postcards come out, yeah.
Working through weekends leading into Labor Day and then multiple weeks with two weekends in a row for a department that size. So it is certainly administratively burdensome. I'm saying I'm a huge fan of vote by mail.
Sure.
But that is, that is a real impact. That's why, coming out of COVID, we prioritize adding staff to Danielle's department because we saw that this was coming, and we didn't feel it was frankly consignable or doable to continue to keep only three full-timers.
Yeah, twenty, the calendar year two thousand twenty-four will have eighteen weeks that were not in the throes of election cycles out of the fifty-two, and during those eighteen weeks, we'll have two town meetings and all the five other things that, four other things that we had mentioned that we tried to do. And that really is the biggest challenge, is managing all of the other things that we do at the same time. So that's where the, the changeover of the office has made things a little bit more efficient, where everything is kind of hands-on for them, a lot more workstation so that we can bring in some additional support.
Excellent. Anything else on our side?
How about the select board?
I just want to say that you guys do a terrific job.
Thank you.
I tell you this every year, but I, I believe it, I see it. Even though there was a small turnout on Saturday, it was, it was full bore, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I just made a couple of notes. Does the state contribute or reimburse any money towards the early elections?
There is some local unfunded mandate. Not all parts of our cost are covered through that local unfunded mandate, but there is some. There's, they haven't been allocating enough money to actually provide back a hundred percent of what the costs are.
Right, so I'm on one of the policy committees for the Mass Municipal Association, and we talked about this over the past couple of years, several years, about early voting and how that works, and the MMA strongly brings that up every time, that there is an unfunded mandate part there, and it's, it's really hurtful to a lot of the communities, especially some of the smaller communities, so I think it's worth noting that. I also wanted to mention that over the years since you've been here, you've really been ahead of the curve on technology, so you brought on new ballot, ballot machines and the iPads on checking people in and the whole process, and to be able to do that, rather than be under pressure to do that, because it's, you know, a big presidential election, you have been really progressive in making sure that happened along the way, and we, it makes it very smooth. I notice little improvements and changes every year as you tweak it. I loved going to vote and seeing the big flags of what precinct it was. It felt so festive and fun to be there. And also, the work that you did through redistricting, that was a tremendous undertaking with a very small staff, so I want to thank you for that. And also, one of the surprising statistics is the number of weddings and people that come in there, you know...
Especially now that the building looks nice.
Right.
It's true, there has been an uptick.
And when the grounds are better, I hope to see that number increase, because it must be a good, fun part of the job to be able to be part of those special days. And last but not least, I want to thank you and your staff, but I also want to thank the poll workers that are there through very long days and always with a smile, always very welcoming, and I feel like very grateful to be in a community where it's safe and accessible to vote, and you're welcomed in there, so thank you very much for your leadership.
I'll pass on, it is a team effort, for sure, and we do have some incredible poll workers here.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
All right, next we have Health and Community Services.
Sure. Director Kennedy is in a, at a national health conference this year, so Deputy Director Honan will be stepping in and stepping up to give this presentation. For following along, you're on page fifty-five in your line item budget.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, as Connor had said, Director Kennedy's out of town, so she has asked me to be here for her, and I am, I'm glad to be here to present our departmental budget for FY twenty-four. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Coria Honan. I'm the Deputy Director of Health and Community Services, a position that was created out of a restructure that our department underwent in two thousand twenty. And prior to that, I was a veteran service officer since two thousand eighteen. So for those of you who haven't heard Kristin Kennedy present, our department, it was formed in two thousand fifteen, embodying the World Health Organization's definition of health, which is a state of complete physical, mental and social well-being, not merely the absence of disease or infirmity. We also use the American Public Health Association definition of a community, which is a group of people with diverse characteristics who are linked by social ties, share common perspectives, and engage in joint action in geographical locations or settings. Our department merges several pre-existing departments that share a common goal under one umbrella, which is providing essential services to the community in a one-stop-shop setting, this building that we're in right now, along with the Health Department over at Town Hall, and connecting residents to community providers and increasing staff awareness of resources and services that are available to our community members. So what do we do? The Department of Health and Community Services is charged with supporting the Board of Health, Recreation Commission, Council on Aging, the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, and the Taxation Aid Committee. These boards and committees share similar missions of promoting health, wellness, and community engagement. Our organizational structure leverages the strength of a diverse and complementary staff and promotes efficiency. Teamwork and collaboration among our staff yield improved service delivery to a wider audience of Easton residents. So to build off of the previous slide, with this structure that we have, this team environment, our, members of our department can work together to bring solutions to problems. Just last week, I went out with two of our health inspectors to, to complaints in the community to act as a connection of a solution to a problem, rather than just simply cite them for the issue, whatever it may be. We left them with, with a potential solution and some options for them to consider, that type of thing. It just really, it shows that we work from these solutions-based angle to solve unique problems faced by our community members. So how do we do this? We perform preventative actions, such as statutorily required inspections that protect the public. Inspections can include food establishments, homes where there may be conditions that endanger the occupants or neighbors. We oversee the installation of septic systems, inspect camps, and semi-public pools, and much more. We provide supportive services, such as transportation, access to financial supports, as well as federal, state, and local veterans' benefits. And I'm excited to share that we've been able to expand our transportation program in recent months. I look forward to telling you that, about that in the next slides. We provide opportunities for community engagement beyond traditional offerings. I'll also tell you more about those programs under our community engagement and outreach section as well. We work collaboratively with other departments to provide innovative programs, such as our growing community paramedicine program and our community mental health liaison. These two innovative programs are essential assets in our community. Both professionals are located here at Frothingham Hall in that back office behind us here, and they further the mission that I spoke of earlier, bringing our partners in EMS and police into our day-to-day programming. One of the things our mental health liaison will be taking the lead on is a community-at-risk empowerment team, care team. This team is made up of many essential community partners, leaders from our local town departments that will be meeting to discuss, brainstorm, and come up with resources that may assist our residents. Just another example of how we've adopted a mindset that focuses on solution, I'm sorry about the presentation.
Sorry, we're looking for another chord.
Okay. It might be too long, the chord.
Yeah.
It loses its, yeah, but I guess I'll continue on.
Sure.
Okay. No, that's okay. So anyway...
Light show behind you.
Yes, so it's just another example of how we, we support...
You can't, got another? Awesome.
All right, pause for a second?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, no, no problem.
Are you into the A C line?
Yeah, so, I'll take one in.
All right. Sort of long. I think we have a longer one, but I can't find it.
I was still a bit, doesn't translate after a certain length, because in the wall, there's a ten footer, two, so do you have a short? Um...
Let's see if this one works.
Right. Presentation's awesome, I promise.
That's part of being a good presenter, you just need to roll with the punches here.
Yes.
It's not flickering so far.
What were you on?
Four.
All right.
Good.
Sorry for the virus.
Thank you, everybody. All right, so we were, where I left off was that our mental health liaison will be charged with forming and bringing it together, this care team, the community-at-risk empowerment team. This will just be another example of how we adopted this mindset in our department and trying to partner with other departments on this problem solving, meeting problems with solutions, just giving people the tools to empower them to create their own solutions and avoid these common downfalls going forward. So, and then we also respond to the unexpected and unanticipated, and, you know, COVID-19 may come to mind immediately when we say unexpected, unanticipated, and that certainly was a great example of us doing that. Our department, where, you know, our bus drivers and administrative assistants jumped on the phone with a call list of five hundred-plus numbers, and, and we made calls to folks who wanted to sign up to get the vaccine, and we overcame their barrier to technology by completing the application with them over the phone in the state-mandated system to sign up for those vaccines. But it also applies to, you know, our team working with the fire department and housing authority to check on vulnerable residents during extreme weather conditions, heat and cold. We provide a cooling center here during extreme heat. We have a very large commercial generator in the back. This building is equipped to be a shelter in place if needed, and then we provide a warming center in the cold winter months as well. We also go door-to-door to check on residents whose neighbor, you know, whose neighborhoods may be roadblocked by fallen trees from wind or other events, make sure they have essential resources such as baby formula, medications, and other essential items. So this is our team, and I apologize for a little formatting kind of change here, but this is our team. Here's a visual representation of our staff that we're working with. We currently have twelve point three full-time employees within the department, and this includes our most recent addition of the full-time community mental health liaison. She's been with us since mid-February and has already been instrumental in assisting police, and the Health Department, and community members with some very challenging situations.
Does she actually go out with a police officer?
She does, so she goes out on certain calls. She's, you know, obviously, if she's in the cruiser with the police officer, she will respond where it's safe to do so, but our chief has been adamant about her safety and responding to those things, so it's, you know, it's done from a thoughtful approach, having her involved. So I'd like to just show some highlights here. So the first highlights I'd like to make is our benefits navigator, Tracy Levine. So she joined our team in March of two thousand twenty-two with the simple mission of connecting the community with available resources. It's not so simple, but it is. So using ARPA funds in two thousand twenty-two, we added Tracy to our team, and having a staff member dedicated to finding those resources has been a wonderful asset to our department and community members as well. There's now a separate office within our building where I can send folks, when I'm done, going over their veterans' benefits, to say, here, check in with Tracy, and she- to our department and community members as well. There's now a separate office within our building where I can send folks, when I'm done, going over their veterans' benefits, to say, here, check in with Tracy, and she goes over essentially benefits that are not determined by your veteran status, are not determined by your age, or anything like that. She really combs through A to Z with folks on what is there to help her. So, you know, it's a wonderful asset to our department. She's very busy, though. So, she has seen 326 interactions since March 2022, and some of those interactions are, you know, duplicate interactions, or some of them are won with the same person. But when we look at applications for housing or SNAP benefits, food resources, those are guaranteed to be multiple interactions over the course of at least the first year working with these folks, and then follow-ups throughout. So, these numbers are only a small peak at what she's actually accomplishing. And, yeah, that is fairly easy to read from where most people are sitting, but the majority of this is housing. We've recently coming out of, you know, a housing crisis, some would say, and issues with that, and Tracy makes herself available to work with folks, again, of any age, any background, any qualifying factors, to work with them. And the smaller pie chart on the right-hand side, that is a visual representation of the mode of appointments, right? So, she's meeting with them in the office mostly, but you can also see here that she's willing to meet with them where they are. That may be in a parking lot somewhere, that may be at a skilled nursing facility, or at their home even. That's where a lot of cases happen. So, we've accomplished a lot, and we're already seeing a large rise in our numbers with Tracy being in the department here. And, you know, the positive effects of our wraparound services that we're able to provide in these related programs is undeniable. It's working. We are, like I had said, truly a one-stop-shop. We don't lose people by sending them out to the parking lot to get in their vehicle and drive 45 minutes to the next department or to the next external, you know, community resource. We have them, we keep them in the building until their, you know, their situation becomes a little more stable.
Corey, could I just jump in on the housing piece? I think something that's really important. So, we, it was at an unrelated event here, and staff from Frothingham were here, staff from Town Hall, particularly the Planning Department, were here, and, you know, hearing from Tracy on some of this data collection. So, when we built the position, particularly where we kind of piloted it with grant funding, we want to make sure we were doing good intake data collection, understand what are the needs that we are serving in the community, what are the needs that we're seeing come through the door most, and you'll see that housing is the largest, almost a full third. And something, that says a lot just of a number, but the kind of qualitative aspect from speaking with Tracy that has stood out, and Corey, correct me if this dynamic has changed, but one of the impacts, I think, Shereen, you asked about how we're all managing on the municipal and on the school side of the expiration of a lot of federal grants that were meant to deal with a lot of the real harms exacerbated by the pandemic, and, you know, are we basically all set once those grants go away? And we said, no, we need to continue to sustain these programs because you're seeing the ripple effects of not just financial pandemic error policies expiring, but also things like eviction moratoriums expiring, rent freezes expiring. And so, there are a tremendous number of people who, here in Easton, who have come through these doors looking for help, who are not necessarily in an affordable unit or in a housing authority unit, but they're in a market-rate rental that, they're sometimes looking at double-digit rent increases now that rent can be increased. These are not areas that we have any regulatory control over and is consistent with what we're seeing through the market. And one of the really challenging things is that there's very, very, very little excess leasing capacity at any of the apartments in Easton. And so, that's also true in the region. There's an enormous shortfall of this type of housing in the region, and so those can be really difficult connections to try to build where, you know, folks who live here or may have kids here, you know, are kind of subject to a whim of market forces, and so that's why you're seeing that. So, there's a really important story there that even for folks that, you know, they're in a market rate. We've obviously made a lot of progress in, you know, more affordable housing the past 10 years, but it's important, looking at it globally, that there is still an enormous shortfall of this type of housing stock available for folks, and it's a really tough problem. We're very lucky to have Tracy here trying to help those folks out.
Absolutely, and I totally agree. Yeah, and just to add to that, it's every housing issue we run into here in Easton, it's a puzzle, and there's pieces missing, and there's no directions, and it's, you know, it's tough. It's start from scratch on every case is unique in its own way, and it's a little, we're mostly dealing with folks that fall within the cracks, they're just below or just above these demarcation lines where they're qualified for certain benefits, and that's where we try to bridge the gaps. So, my next highlight here, I'd like to highlight our transportation expansion. This is our most recent rebranding and department upgrade. So, you'll notice, if you did notice, in the parking lot, we have several shuttle buses, and they used to, once upon a time, say Council on Aging. We have entered a, not necessarily a new agreement, but a new understanding with BAT, that these vehicles can be used not just for elderly and disabled. However, we will still keep those folks priority. So, we, in that spirit of that, we have decided to brand these vehicles with our department name, Health and Community Services, and that's been a nice change to kind of get the word out that we are providing these services regardless of age, regardless of ability level, status, those types of qualifying situations. So, transportation's long been a challenge of our residents, and especially those with mobility and financial issues. And so, also, the Age Friendly Advisory Committee has identified transportation as a hot item.
In housing?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Most of what we do here. But yes, so they've definitely identified transportation as a hot item on the survey, and this is our answer to that data that's been collected. We're trying several new things, new scheduling, trying to expand hours and days services provided, trying to gather information on what are those essential services that people need in addition to what we already do, which is a reservation ride system. It's the equivalent of ordering a taxicab or booking a ride for, you know, three days in advance. We're trying to meet the middle ground there, where we don't quite have bus stops in Easton, but we've identified these areas that are transportation-challenged or transportation areas of opportunity that we've identified, which would be our community housing, such as the Housing Authority, our Village Rest Home as an example, other rest homes in the area. In addition to that, our apartment buildings and complexes such as that, because in addition to what I've already laid out, BAT has also, we're working on fine-tuning transporting, the potential of transporting minors, haven't quite delved into that area yet, but it is allowed by the vehicle lease agreement. But that's an expansion to come. But what you'll see today is what we have is known as, we've dubbed it the Shop It and Go Loop in Easton, and where residents can, they don't have to book the ride in advance. If the bus is driving through this area, you can get on, and the destination is, it's on Wednesdays, the destination is like Roach Brothers Plaza, an area where you can do food shopping, there's the Dollar Tree, you could get your nails done, there's maybe a hair salon, the UPS stores, things like this, right? And the idea is to just keep, continue to break down those barriers to accessing things that people need. We're, you know, we're trying to address the transportation issue in a combined effort with our other departments. So, for instance, Tracy will see a client who identifies, you know, they're not there for transportation, but they're there talking to her about, you know, signing up for SNAP, and, oh, by the way, you know, my, we take care of my grandson, we care for him, and he can't get rides to his appointments that he needs to get to. And so, Tracy can simply walk outside of her office, stop in with Bruce, and they can come, Bruce is our acting transportation coordinator, former full-time driver, and they can coordinate a plan to get this person where they need to go. And it really just, the ripple effect from that is it relieves stress in other areas because now this one, what seems simple, but it's, they have the blinders on because they're distracted by this transportation problem. So, these things really all do trickle down and also up to solve the greater issues here. We, so, I've told you about the Shop and Go Loop, that's great. We've also devised a plan to come up with, and the Shop and Go Loop has dispatched this past Saturday, and also another vehicle was there to offer rides for folks to go vote, and we'll do the same for Town Meeting. So, hopefully, we'll generate maybe some new faces that normally wouldn't have thought to come, but hey, the bus is here, and I've got nothing to do, so maybe I'll go, I'll go for the ride. So, that's, you know, these things all combine and solve multiple problems such as social isolation and, as well as just being isolated from basic necessities.
Could we help you with a flyer demonstrating how much fun Town Meeting is?
Yes, that would be great. We came up with a transportation flyer, but I haven't come up with that yet. That's a good plan. Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and highlight the great work of my other Deputy Director, Joe Pitti. Joe, he stepped into his role in June of 2022, and he set to work building upon Easton's existing programming that we have, and has brought in a lot of new ideas and has expanded on what we've already offered in the past. For instance, working with the DPW Police and Fire, he brought a mini Touch a Truck event to the town pool, so you can see some pictures there. I think one of the children's holding a little chainsaw. It's fake. Yeah. It looks really fun, though. Like, this is just new and exciting things going on. And if you follow the Town Facebook page, you'll see that Joe and his staff, they leverage social media, and they get a lot of people out there to the programs and events that they're hosting. And they've added programming that stretched beyond the current offerings while keeping with the established tradition of what's been offered in the past. And some of the new programs, the traditional programs that we've all known and loved, such as the Egg Hunt, which brought out over 160 participants, I was there with my kids, the Children's Races, and, you know, Guided by the Age Friendly Action Plan adopted by the Select Board. We have been adding multi-generational programming, and this past week, School Vacation Week, where a lot of kids are at home, being cared for by grandparents or other family members, we had a singer and storyteller right here at our building here at Frothingham Hall. So, just trying to kind of leverage new angles like that, the way we can hit some, get some people engaged that normally would not be able to interact with us. Daytime Fitness has gone from six unique classes with eight sessions offered per week to 11 unique classes offered 15 times per week. So, there's been a clear increase there. Establishing relationship with vendors that have allowed us to offer video game design course, something that's not traditionally been offered, horsemanship, pottery, and many other diverse programs. We've added floor hockey that actually gets played in this room, which is pretty interesting to see. And I could just go on and on, the ballroom dancing for adults, but instead of belaboring all the wonderful programs that are offered, I would encourage you to check out the Engage in Easton Spring Programs that's pictured there. So, and this past week, the Recreation Commission authorized spending for gift monies to support a town-wide recreational facility study. So, looking forward to that process. So, how does this all impact our budget? In our payroll section, you'll see contractual obligations with the exception of one area. We are requesting $3,500 for one intern, and we've participated in programs in the past through Department of Public Health, but some of these programs come with constraints, and we'd like the ability to use this intern for where we see would be the best placement. We envisage this person being key to the furthering the Community Paramedicine Program as well as the Mental Health Liaison. Would just like to have that freedom to utilize this person in those areas. In our expense section, you'll see that we've shifted $1,099 from the line item of heat to electricity. That is basically to account for these mini-split units that were recently installed. They run off electric. Our building is very old and has a unfortunately inefficient steam, heat, gas system. So, installing these that also use, they also provide heat, we can supplement the heat with the, you see the furnace over there, or the radiator over there. It works to save money. So, it's cost-effective, and it's just a better way for us to represent where this money's being spent, moving it over to electricity. So, it's not necessarily an increase. You may see or will see a significant increase in our repair and maintenance for hardware and software. This is to account updating programs that we use for data tracking, where we've usually, we've just been making do with what we've always used in the past, and we're finding that with these new staff members, they bring new ideas and new ways of doing things, we can really leverage that data to help more people reach a wider audience, you know, do a one-sign-up, you know, form for folks that are signing up their families for these programs. They don't have to continuously sign up, show up with cash, online payments, things like that. So, and, yes, nursing services, you'll see a slight decrease. This is a contracted employee, and we are projecting less dependence on this service as COVID normalizes. And clothing and uniforms, that's another contractual obligation. Travel, we'll see a slight increase requested there with expanded staff and the licensures and certifications that come with these staffs, such as our LMHC. Among others, there are, you know, continuing education units that are required, these require travel now that we're coming out of the COVID virtual setting a little bit more. So, that's where you'll see increases for that. And then lastly, we simply removed $250 that was in the newsletter line item. That is paid for through our Executive Office of Elder Affairs Grant and Printing Service LPI. So, I thank you all for your time and attention during my presentation, and appreciate your consideration of this budget presentation.
Thanks, Corey.
Any questions?
So, Corey, the only question I have, you've probably covered this, but I don't think I grabbed it, is that the Benefits Navigator and the Mental Health Liaison are both in there as $0. I wasn't sure where the, is that a grant salary, or is that contained within administrators? Like, where did that go?
The Benefits Navigator is through ARPA funding until it expires at the end of 2024. And the Mental Health Liaison, let's see.
That's the same.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. That's what I figured, and I want to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
But we plan to have these be on the upper funding?
Correct. We'll need to absorb it into the operating budget, so this is part of the kind of balancing act that we are looking at as we kind of navigate the next three fiscal years is for some of these expansions, particularly in this department and in this building. We looked at how broad the uses of ARPA were and what I feel are quite clear intent on those dollars being used to provide both direct financial assistance, which folks working in this department, finance, and others have distributed hundreds of thousands up to folks, but expanding programs for folks disproportionately harmed by COVID, that we wanted to get these programs off the ground now, quickly, implement them, collect the data on them, and prove out that they add tremendous value, and then permanently absorb them.
Is there a grant writer that's looking at grants that could potentially support programs in the future?
So, we do not have a recurring revenue for a grant writer, and everyone kind of pitches in, and we've been able to be pretty successful with that originally, actually. The Benefits Navigator position was, we hoped to do both, but just the volume of human service requests coming through the door has made that impossible. So, we will be looking at, and this department already does, through a variety of Executive Office of Elder Affairs and other state grant programs, support things like transportation, shine, other kind of benefits administration. But ultimately, at minimum, a portion of that will have to be born in the operating budget, and it's a priority we're working on.
Corey, what's the early return on the Shop and Loop?
So. The first trip out, so we're on our fourth week. This Wednesday will be our fourth week of doing that trip. The first week was no notice, just show up at these locations, the driver did outreach within the offices at these, you know, whether it's the Housing Authority or the apartment complexes to post flyers. So, that week was, that week had no riders. The following week, we doubled the ridership. Well, we had one rider, so we had a 100% increase in riders. The following week after that, we had two riders. So, we're trending in the right direction. So we're, we're trending in the right direction. And to keep in mind, the ride, the shopping go is for folks who didn't plan ahead to reserve their ride. So I imagine it will take some time to gain traction and take off. But, you know, in addition to those, we provided like trips we went to. We had a guided tour at SEMREC. We did the Patriots Hall of Fame. So we're gaining some traction in getting these, getting ridership up. But ridership as a whole has increased post-COVID, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey, quick question for you.
Sure.
Well, I hope it is, but it might not be quick. Easton's unhoused population, can you, briefly, as is reasonable, characterize that a little bit for us? And if there's a, what I'm asking about is where we're adding benefits coordination, where we're maximizing our utilization of programs to support folks. Do we have any early metrics or analyses that give us a sense of what's working, what's working best? Are we improving the situation or treading water with that?
Yeah, thank you. So I think the first part of your question, what, what these housing situations look like are, it varies. So we have folks that are couch surfing at a friend's house, technically considered homeless. Some folks are sleeping in their vehicles. We have some folks that are camping out type of situation or have temporary residence that is, it's imminent to expire. That's usually what we're dealing with is folks calling us somewhat at the 11th hour of, you know, being evicted next week. And it's, okay, well, had we had more notice, that, that wouldn't have even been an issue because we deal with that a lot, quite a bit where folks will tell us, in six months, I need to find a place to live. And Tracy is key to that operation. Like that's just a regular day for her. Okay, so, but the next week I will be homeless, not quite a regular day, but it's still something we can handle and we have handled using resources from, you know, our state legislation and, you know, our, our local leaders. And we just kind of leverage resources and just get on the phone and, and call anybody and everyone to see what can be done, whether it's, you know, they know of, of an affordable unit in another town. We get them into that other town. It's not necessarily rehousing them in Easton, unfortunately, but at that point, it doesn't matter. I think at that point, it's not, not particular what town it is, it's just getting them into safe housing. We have family shelters. There's a lot of organizations that offer these, but the family shelters, a colleague of mine who works with Father Bill's in Main Spring has informed me that we have over 800 homeless families in Massachusetts right now. That's a high number for what they usually see. So family shelters are overwhelmed. Individual shelters have wait lists. So it's, it's a challenge, but I think our approach, I feel confident that we're equipped to do everything we can to support these folks. And I think short of, you know, opening a homeless shelter in Easton, we're doing everything we can, but we do have those shelters and supports just one town over. Well, there's one in Attleboro, a couple towns over, and then we have Brockton and up the line Quincy. So there are definitely local options. So to answer your question, yes, I think we're, we're meeting those needs as best as we can. Nothing's perfect, but we're doing pretty, we're doing a pretty good job at handling what's coming out of it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this side?
From the Select Board? There's so many fantastic new programs, how's the response been to those?
Really good. It's really busy.
Great.
Yeah, my office is just right here, so I hear all the action. And it's, yeah, it's really good. We, you know, some days we see, you know, caregivers with strollers, with babies in the strollers doing workouts in this room. It's just, it's been a great, you know, new, new life into the programs that, that have traditionally been offered.
Yeah, fantastic job using social media to communicate it all.
Yeah, they do a great job. It's all over, so thank you.
Mark, Craig?
Standing, thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
So I just made a couple of notes. I have had the opportunity to work with many in your department and the compassion, creativity and connection is just amazing. I don't know how, how you do it. The work that you do to support our veterans is just incredible. You know, I see what other towns are doing. Massachusetts is a state that really has put a lot of funding and a lot of resources towards our veterans, but each community does it their own way. And I just want to tell you that I think you're doing an amazing job with that.
Thank you.
For a really important community. Having a paid intern is, is wonderful and I'm happy to hear that it is a paid intern because I don't believe in non-paid interns. I think if they're there to, to help, it's really important to, to make sure that they are, are taken care of in that way. One of the things that I will say in my time on the board that I'm most proud of is this board, is the work that we've done collectively to support our vulnerable population. And one of those things that Mark brought forward with Tom Broussard was to provide some taxation relief and that's been an amazing program.
It is.
And just thinking those creative ideas outside the box and having people champion those initiatives has been so important. The rental assistance that was provided during COVID. And, you know, I think this is the, this was a law presentation and I think everybody really had the most questions and comments on it. These are, these are not luxury positions. These are vital positions that are doing amazing things in our community that people see every day. And I think that, you know, we have one guest tonight who I really appreciate from the public to come here and I hope people are watching this at home and paying attention because it's very hard to get these positions put into the budget. And we're being, you know, when I say we, I mean Connor, is being very thoughtful about how to wind that down. But the fact is, these positions need to be funded. They can't go away. When Stephanie started as the Health Liaison, she didn't ramp up. Day one, I'm told, she was like at full capacity already. So that, you know, you think you have a new position and, you know, they have a little honeymoon period. They don't. They come in and there's already an established workload for it. So I think it's important that people know that. I hope the community will really fund these things. We're talking about housing and we need to bring new housing forward. I want to see this room filled with people demanding that we bring in more housing for people. It's important. Those are the calls that I get the most of people that are in desperate need for housing. And they're, they're really challenging stories and you guys are doing an amazing job with that. So I just, those are just my thoughts and I just wanted to say thank you for all your great work.
Thank you. We have a great team and we all love it.
Just want to piggyback a little bit. I've seen an increase in people at, at Big Y Plaza looking for help.
Good.
And you've responded a couple of times to people that I referred. They were, you know, it's not the same group of people, but they're.
Oh, right. I know what you're referring to. That's, yeah, those are difficult, difficult cases.
I think that's an important note on a, you know, sometimes challenging policy area where there are situations where we send, you know, basically civilian benefit workers out to be the point of contact, to check in with people, provide them with resources, business cards. And that's been something that you and the team have done a great job on, but we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, everyone.
Floor hockey was also hilariously dangerous for everybody involved.
Oh, cool. Yes, so you can attest. I only saw it one night.
It was amazing. Every part of it.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Corey.
So Kevin, we have you next for Insuptional Services.
In the line item budget, that's page 41. Just want to point out, Kevin, I don't know if this is in your prepared remarks, if it is, I apologize, but you know, Kevin's department is one of the ones that's integral to the care team that Corey just referenced as far as, you know, when folks think of human services that old governments provide, they don't necessarily think of building inspections. But Kevin and his team are people who are in people's properties. They see things that we may not all see and are regularly once flagging, hey, there's a pending eviction problem here. There's a, there's an issue with life safety here. What can we do to try to help these people get in a safer place? So I want to start with giving you credit for that.
Thank you. Yeah, no, put together a good team. I mean, even the library is involved, which is, it's a fantastic thing. Wow, I get to follow a Kristin Kennedy PowerPoint. That's a tough act. I don't really do PowerPoints. I know how to swing a hammer. I guess I should have built a diorama. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Kevin Greiner. I'm the Inspector Buildings here. Been in the position for about four years now, going towards my 20th year with the town. I started in 2004 as the Electrical Inspector and worked my way up to this position. So what we have to date right now, from July 1st of last year, is about 2,500 permits and $519,000 in revenue so far. And we waived $140,000 on these for things like schools and town projects. That's down a little bit in permit numbers, but up in revenue, which tells me there's more commercial projects going on because residential permits are less expensive. But I expect probably 600 more permits before the end of the fiscal year. We do about 10 a day, 365 days a year. So it's, we're a pretty busy department. I have nine staff members, most of them, the majority of them are part-time. Myself and my admin staff are full-time. I do share my admin staff with Health and Community Services, so, and the Board of Health. My budget is mostly contractual. We did have last year a $15,000 increase in the, the other part of it for weights and measures. So the weights and measures has always been done by the state. Recently they've decided, and it was supposed to be years ago, but they kind of put a dead stop to it, that towns with more than, I think, 10,000 residents, they were not going to do anymore. And we had to basically bring on staff to do it. They charged us $5,000 to do it, which was basically a net loss because we didn't charge anything for the service. Bringing on someone to do that job, we were fortunate to, to bring on Mark Coyne, who's a town resident. He worked for the city of Brockton doing that for years and years. He's very talented. He knows the stuff. And he said, all the other towns are charging him, why don't you charge him? So we actually have a fee system for the pharmacies and the supermarkets, the gas stations now. So a lot of the money that we expend for his position will come back to us, probably not all of it. But the $15,000 was a one-time to buy equipment. We didn't have any equipment to do the job. So we've purchased everything he needs to do that job. He works part-time for us and for the town of Sharon.
Can I interrupt and just ask you, what does weights and measures do?
So weights and measures, he goes out to gas stations, measures, you know, he'll check the pumps to make sure they're accurate. He goes to the pharmacies to make sure their scales are accurate, the supermarket, all the, all the scales, all the pumps, all of that stuff in town. And there are several. I, I had no idea the amount, and, and the state wasn't even getting to everything. The state was only doing about half of what should be done. So we're fortunate to have him. It's, it's a good addition. So when you look at our salary line item, the, the increase there is basically for his salary. We're estimating about 380 hours a year for that. It's going to, it's going to come out roughly to just under $14,000 at, at the hourly rate that we're paying. So that's, that's the biggest increase. For, for what we do, generally we bring in about twice what the expenditure for our department is in revenue for the town. This year, you know, we've got a lot of work. We've got a new permitting system. We've got a new energy code, which was thrown at us January 1st with no concurrency period. We haven't had any training and it's very confusing. So we're working, trying to work through that and kind of navigate that. New fire code in January as well, and we expect a new building code in July. So it's going to be a busy year. We have two big decent sized housing developments, 20 houses off South Street and then on, almost across from that, across from the end of Aquanica Ave, there's 38 houses, I believe, going in there. Those are going to start very soon. So that's going to add to that, those permit numbers as well as getting ready to tear down the driving range in the mini golf place and there's going to be 100,000 square foot warehouse going up there. So that's going to be a big job. So we're, we're going to be busy. But we have a very modest increase and again, it's, it's contractual items as always, so. Any questions?
Anything else?
Great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, don't sell yourself short.
Perfect length.
Anyone on the slideboard? No questions?
I just want to add, I think Kevin, since you've become the Inspector of Buildings, you know, COVID, one of the things that was strange was after the initial shutdown, permitting just exploded, right? There's a lot of reasons for that. Monetary, fiscal policy reasons, most a lot of people being in their house and looking at it. And so your permit activity's grown by, I think, almost 30%.
Yes, yes. Or that, you know, the, the decrease this year is, again, people are back to work, they're doing less projects in their home. So that's, that's the decrease in numbers, but.
But even if that's the new normal, that's still 20-plus percent above what was happening.
Exactly.
So this department's been incredibly busy. They do a great job.
And when I think of Insuptional Services, the changes that happened during that period of time, you didn't have any increased staffing. So your numbers went up, but your staff didn't. And to be able to maintain training. When COVID started, I remember getting a call from somebody, their kitchen was in the middle of, you know, they, they were without a kitchen and we couldn't get out and inspect it because everything froze and they had to have a kitchen and, you know, it's like, why can't you just go out there and look at it? You know, but there was a lot of reasons, a lot of rules and you had to build a policy very quickly to be able to do that because it was, you know, really life, like, not life and death, but like you, these were really critical things, bathrooms and kitchens that were not able to be used or completed because of inspections. And you were able to put together a safe policy for your staff and for the people whose homes you went into by using video for part of it and really innovative and creative and you got the job done. So that's just something that sticks out to me. I don't really know a lot about the other things that you do, but those are the highlights of what I'll remember.
I appreciate that. And I mean, all the departments had to navigate just uncharted territory, so it was, it was hard for all of us, but I think the town pulled together and did a great job.
Kevin, what I also wanted to say was, by good presentation, I also meant that every department can generate revenue.
Yes.
And so your department being Insuptional Services and you actually found a way to add some revenue to your budget is, is good.
Yeah, we look at that every year to see where we can, we can add something, but it, you know, it's difficult because you don't want to tax the people too much. And we, we try to, we try to keep the, the fees modest, you know, and, and try to just cover what we, we have to. We look at all the other towns, surrounding towns, and we try to stay, you know, generally in the same area.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Mike Del Tano, come on up. Information Technology.
So Information Technology is page 19 in your line item budget.
Looks like my office up there. Hi, everybody. Mike Del Tano, Information Systems Manager for the IT Department. I've been with the town 24 and a half years and I'm a Department of One. We've got about 120 desktop computers, about 80 laptop computers, 34 servers and about 20 switches all scattered around town, all tied together with 1 gig fiber between buildings. The biggest part of my budget is for maintenance and support of hardware and software, which includes software, our financial software, firewall, storage arrays, online permitting, the website, document management, backup software and on and on and on. There's a whole bunch of them. Some of them stay the same every year and, but the others kind of go up a little bit at a time. None of them have gone up drastically over the last few years, been kind of lucky. The biggest increase this year is with the Data Communications, which is basically, it's bulletproof, taking on more of a cybersecurity presence with the town. They've been monitoring our four Hyper V servers and our mail server for the last five or six years. And now we're going to start putting on a few other servers. We're going to start doing some other services in the cloud such as SharePoint to get our file shares out there. That's to cover all of that and hopefully more. We'll see, I've had numerous meetings with these guys almost every day. And we'll be talking about servers tomorrow morning at 9:30 to decide how we can consolidate, how we can move things to the cloud, how we can make things better for everybody who works for the town.
So when you say bulletproof, just to clarify, that's the vendor's name?
That's the, the, there used to be Terminal Exchange and we've done a lot of things with them over the years, projects, upgrading the mail server, monitoring those five servers. And now we're just kind of expanding that so that we can meet all the criteria that Maya's going to put on us July 1st. Maya's going to put on us July 1st.
And on that note, so we've, over time, so as Mike said, he's a department of one and he's done an incredible job, given the size of the network and the obligations there. We are currently insured for cybersecurity laws, including ransomware and other kinds of nightmare, real, real nightmare fuel for government leaders. But those companies that anyone who works in insurance or you touch it in your private sector jobs, it's becoming much, much, much harder to go to market and find any insurers who want to touch that area. And so folks are, whether it's Maya or Moody's or other agencies, are really, really, really upping their standards for cybersecurity, or else you're, you know, they don't want to cover you, right? It's sort of like trying to get car insurance if you hit a pole every time you leave your house. And so Mike's been doing, since November, I think, funded in the capital budget, a network security audit, cybersecurity program with bulletproof for the town. There's just been an extraordinary amount of work to make sure that we're postured appropriately to improve our network, hardware, software, so that we can stay safe. And that's part of why you're seeing a significant increase of 40,000 in that line, which we anticipate is going to be the first of many sizable increases to this budget in the coming years to make sure that we are being as responsible as we can be in these areas.
How much is the insurance? Because I don't see it in this part of the budget, is it in the different part?
It's carried in the fixed costs, it's part of our property casualty and liability insurance. I don't know the exact number of that subset of it, but our insurances are...
Will these investments lower the insurance rate, like cost? Because we're creating...
Usually not lower, but they can help towards earning credits off of the premium. And so that's something my office manages, I'm going to touch on all of my presentation, but we get between 20 and 50,000 dollars a year off of our insurances through best practices with property liability and casualty management programs, trainings on OSHA standards, trench safety, because we maintain the insurance for everything, workers' comp, building loss, catastrophic loss, things of that nature. And so through ongoing training and implementation of improved practices, which we're doing in the cyber area here, we do end up with, you know, pretty non-insignificant credits off of our insurances, helps us control those costs.
That's good. As part of the, your work, do you also train employees on how to be aware of certain scams that are going on? Like I know there's a lot of phishing scams out there.
Yeah, well, we've had programs in the past and Bulletproof wants us to continue to do more programs in the future, which they haven't outlined for us yet, but we should be seeing that coming down the pipe within the next couple of months. If I have to do personal one-on-one, I do personal one-on-one, and if they still don't listen, then I shame the mental learning.
We have participated in statewide programming for cyber awareness, so the state is starting to lean in on a lot more of this too, but it's going to become, in my opinion, much more important that everyone has their local shop running these things as part of onboarding and expectation setting, which has just not been the case in government. And so the state's funded some of those, which we've participated in. I think they published the results for all the colleagues to look at, so that was fun. I'm really falling for those, but, so we've done some of it, but we need to do more and that'll get built into part of this capacity building.
That's good. Isn't it, they're getting pretty good at the scams.
Oh, good.
And also during COVID, when people were working remotely and even, you know, the staff that didn't continue to work with laptops, that raised a big risk because it was a big opportunity there to be outside the internal network, so we did a good job.
Yeah, that was, let's not do that again. Loading in at once was just crazy. Hopefully, if it happens ever again, by then everything's going to be in the cloud to the point where they can just work from home, put their login without having to create that two-way street into the buildings.
How much of our data is in the cloud currently and is there a goal to be completely in the cloud?
I don't think we'll ever be completely in the cloud. There's certain things that are better to stay here, like GIS, there's just too much, files are too big to be pushing back and forth on a daily basis. We don't have, right now we have, online permitting is on the cloud. And not a, not a whole, much more than that, but in the next few months, we'll be moving a lot of stuff off, loading it into the cloud.
Are there other municipalities that have majority or much more in the cloud than we do?
Oh yeah, I don't know about majority, but much more, yes. But those, those are bigger towns, cities that have more money to spend.
Right, so it is the goal to be much more in the cloud than we currently...
To get as secure as we can is the goal, whether that means keeping it here or putting it there. We've got to go through every server and every file share, and this is where the conversations are starting tomorrow morning, to, to look at every little thing and decide what, where is this better? Is this better up here, is this better down here? How many people have to access this, how many people have to access that? It's going to be a real fine tuning thing that's going to go on probably for a couple of years.
I would, at least that. I would be curious if there's a master plan with a goal. Because you can't do it every year, but you know, what's your end goal and how are you going to get there and over years?
Well, they'll have to design a record, record management system on, you know, also how long do you store these things in, what, you know, what level, because cloud storage is really expensive, so.
Right.
You know, you can't keep just putting and putting things into the cloud without dropping some stuff off on the other end, so there might have to be some digitized storage that's on a local server that only, that's only used as an archive or things like that, but it's, it is, there's going to have to definitely be a detailed plan, so starting off with the analysis that you're doing is a really great first step.
Right, and to be clear, a little bit with the police, because they have, I mean,
they have the vast majority of the data, because they have so many videos and pictures of everything that they do. There are things out there, it's on the cloud, but after a while it drops off into a cheaper storage area where it's, it's still accessible, but it might take you longer to get there.
Right. And just to be clear, part of the, this cybersecurity assessment is creating that exact roadmap of what are these areas that there's opportunity for increased security? This is an area where we're already exceptionally lean financially, so now the priority is security, it is going to cost more.
This is through reduction.
100%, yeah, the exposure of things like this going wrong could be, you know, catastrophic.
Having a server that's a physical location that someone could theoretically get to versus finding the one virtual machine on the one array somewhere in the middle of nowhere.
Well, and also, it's, it's just, it's a staff power issue as well, where you just feel level, the, the amount changing in this space. This is the same even with CEMREC, where we're, we're working at a regional scale to be moving what we can away from local storage management to cloud-based security because the, the funny, there is a cost, but the, the scale that these companies are able to achieve, they're able to implement it at a much more unit cost-effective measure than we can.
Thankfully you have about 10 more years till retirement.
It's going to be very busy two years.
We were quick to correct that.
It's my goal to get you guys in good shape so when I leave here, I don't get too many phone calls.
We'll be able to find you.
Oh yeah, yeah. Everybody's got my cell phone, so.
You're doing an awesome job, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, now we have finance department, which is town accountant, assessors, treasurer, collector. How are we doing, everyone? Does anyone need a break yet, or do we want to take a little break after, after finance? After finance?
Yeah, that sounds...
We'll take a five minute? Okay, great.
So the accounting budget is page 10.
Hello, Wendy. Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm Wendy Nightingale, Finance Director and Town Accountant. Accounting is part of the municipal finance department, which is now the umbrella that houses accounting, assessing, and collector treasurer's office. The accounting department is responsible for maintaining the books or the town's general ledger and related accounting records. This means that we account for all the financial transactions in the town that run through, like other departments, but they then come to accounting, so that they can be recorded on the books. These are things like all the cash receipts, billings and receivable adjustments, and also for cash disbursement, so any, you know, we pay all the bills, we prepare the checks that then go out from the treasurer's office. Accounting is less visible to the public than other departments, we're usually more behind the scenes. Our customers are primarily internal customers of the departments, and typically the outside customers that we get would be vendors looking for, you know, accounts payable checks, or actually, we also handle parking tickets, so sometimes we get people calling about that. Accounting is part of a system of checks and balances. We're responsible for the oversight, integrity, and reporting of all the town's financial data. We do this by monitoring the budget during the year, we analyze accounts in the general ledger, we reconcile cash and accounts receivable with the treasurer collector, we coordinate the financial audit with the independent auditors, we submit multiple reports to the Department of Revenue, we do the year-end balance sheet for free cash certification, we submit Schedule A, which is a pretty comprehensive report of all of our revenues and expenditures that then get uploaded to the Department of Revenue, that they use that for all their data analytics, so you can compare information from one community to another. We also, we work with the assessors office too in completing the tax recap that gets submitted to the Department of Revenue so that we can set the tax rate, all the forms that are related to appropriations and receipts, those types of things that are part of the recap is what accounting would do. We also coordinate the financial audit with our independent auditors. And, you know, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We do, we do other things too related to like the budget, I'll get into that after. Accounting has a staff of three, so there's myself, my assistant town accountant, and a principal clerk. And we've, we've all been working for the town for a relatively long period of time, so. I've been working for the town for 25 years, my assistant 26 years, and principal clerk 19 years. So a lot of longevity in the department. Also, as finance director, the focus of my time is spent assisting with budget preparation, preparing reports, analyses, projections. Developing the annual budget requires a significant amount of time and effort putting our budget book together. We also work with the treasurer collector to coordinate the town's borrowing needs and getting, you know, prepared for that call with the rating agencies. We were able to achieve, or get awarded the distinguished budget award from the Government Finance Officers Association, so really, really proud of that. We've done that for three years in a row, well, not in a row, we skipped a year because of COVID, but for three years we've, we've been able to receive that award. Also, as finance director and town accountant, I am an ex officio member of the Capitol Clinic Committee and Audit Committee, and attend all budget subcommittee meetings. And also, one of the things is I work to prepare like some of the financial articles and the motions for town meeting and the town meeting finance plan. So my budget tonight reflects an increase of 12,801 or 4.71%. That is primarily contractual. If you look at the line item detail in the budget under personnel, you're going to see, as was brought up before, in the town clerk's budget, the assistant department head position is now in a separate line, it was combined in the clerical line, and now that is by itself. You might also notice too, in the, in the budget, that there is a line that says administrative salaries and it's all zeros. Initially, when we submitted the preliminary budget request, we had put in for a shared management analyst position, but that ended up getting, getting cut from the final balancing of the budget. My expense budget is pretty small, it's level funded, it's $4,750. It basically covers dues to professional organizations and training. Training, as CPA, I need 80 hours every two years to maintain that certification, so a lot of that expense covers those hours and also training for my assistant, going to our state association meetings as well. As far as departmental accomplishments, we got a clean opinion on our audit report, mentioned before the GFOA distinguished budget presentation award, we were able to maintain the bond rating. As far as departmental challenges, the, you know, one thing I've noticed, you know, I've been here a long time, is that it just seems like there's no downtime anymore. You know, there used to be some slow times during the year, but we're, we're busy.
This is full tilt all the time.
All year long.
Which is why we had tried to propose and add that staff, which would have been shared technically between four departments, but between finance and management.
Right.
Where we, to get the budget to square, we had to eliminate it.
Right, so I mean, you know, I've had the same amount of staff since I came here in 1998.
I appreciate you saying that because, you know, it looks like magic that all of a sudden the budget's balanced, and I don't think we really talk enough about how do you make that happen and what, what are you sacrificing or risking by not making that happen? We only have so much money, we have to have a balanced budget by law. And some of these, you know, for another area is our town administration, that office is so short-staffed. We have survey after survey after comparison, DPW staff, so, you know, I think, I'm not trying to sound whiny about it, but I think we do have to kind of keep track of some of these things to, to be aware of it. You know, like I say, when we bring in new positions and all of a sudden they're like at capacity on day one, I think that's another job that would end up, up like that because there's such a need for it.
Right.
Yeah, 100%, because it's, one of the things that Wendy's office and frequently Wendy herself ends up doing, not because there's a lack of talented people in the organization, but because everyone's capacity is full and so it falls on frequently the executive team, is you have recurring things like enterprise fund fee analysis or financial sustainability planning for those things, and, you know, it's doable work, but it just takes time. And when you're also the department that's kind of just processing accounts payable and warrants and, you know, is a point of contact for, I don't know, the 40 internal departments, it's, it's just, time gets very strapped. And, you know, we have a lot of really great interdepartmental collaboration, and I'm sure again, for folks in the private sector, you've seen over time the kind of flattening of organizational structures where now the finance department has to be tuned into cybersecurity because it has a reflection on our bond rating. And, you know, we need to be working with planning in the finance department because our climate planning has an impact on our bond rating, not that it shouldn't, but there's just so, so much growth in the scope of responsibility and all, and most of these, particularly in the town offices, departments that have not changed staff models or size in, at some case, decades.
I think as, not only the private sector becomes more complex, but municipalities become more complex because of that, we should also be a case for staffing appropriately so that you're not burning your candle at both ends, right? We have some very, very talented people who present, tonight we present on Wednesday, working for this town, and I would be forsaken if talent were to leave because we're just burning through people too quickly. So we certainly appreciate your longevity and the efforts that you put through, but we think, I think personally we need to do a better job of making sure that we're, we're working the staff appropriately so that we're not killing you.
Thank you.
And I, I wrote a pun, I had an accounting pun and you ruined it for me, so.
Oh, come on, what was the, what was the pun?
It was, it was about the staffing, right? I was going to say, is this an accounting pun, not intended, right? An accounting...
Accounting humor.
Yes. It's, yes, it fills a lot of... It was a pun we just left out there.
This is a very high concentration of people who appreciate it.
This is your audience, actually.
Thank you, Brian.
I do appreciate that though, because I mean, everything is so data-driven today, you know, you want to analyze everything, but, but again, that does take time. And there has also been a huge uptick in just the volume of transactions, you know, as, as budgets grow, there's more bills. The school department bills also go through my department, I mean, they key them in and everything, but we still, you know, run the checks for those and they still require review. And I can tell you, when I first, when I first started working here, the treasurer collector's office had maybe two deposits a day. Yeah, Wendy, Wendy... Yeah, Linda's probably gonna laugh at that.
That sounds awesome.
Because we have paid, we've taken payments from so many different sources, we have online payments, lockbox payments, we have the Unibank payments, you can pay fees online. There are, how many deposits in a day do we have, like 30 I think now or something? It's, and even, even on weekends too, because, you know, it used to just be, you know, five days a week and now it's, now it's like every, every day of the month, yeah.
One of the, the real challenge is that there's very regularly a mismatch of the regulatory structure we work with versus how we want to meet the community where their expectations are. So we do a lot of online permitting, but according to records law, still have to create paper copies of those online permits, which are for anyone who works with paper, which does disintegrate. No, I mean, the idea that stuffing it in a folder is somehow better for the integrity of that information than storing it in a triple-backed up cloud is a little silly, but we have to continue to do that. So you have workflows that ideally and eventually will become more efficient, but they, they have these legacies of, and you'll hear the chief talk about it Wednesday night, where record retention laws for police-related video, and we're moving to body cameras this year, which is great, but that is just going to be gargantuan amount of data storage and the general advice is like, well, just hold on to those terabytes for, you know, all of time. So it, it's, it's challenging to navigate doing the right thing and getting better technology and, you know, people should be able to pay bills online. There's a lot of places that don't and it completely blows my mind. Some of that's generational, but, you know, you, there's still the legacy of those older regulatory structures that haven't caught up, which can be a challenge.
One more thing I wanted to stand with, that on the horizon, we, we are definitely at a point where we need new financial accounting software. The program we have now, we put in in 2009, it was great then, we moved from an in-house system to that, which was great, but we have, we've definitely outgrown it, it's, it's on old architecture. So in order to, it's not like something we can just upgrade, we, we would have to really go to another program. That company has been bought out by another software vendor and they're really looking to migrate people over to, you know, another software package. So no matter what we do, we, we are gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be expensive. And so we're, we're looking at, with the school department, because it's town and school are on the same system, which is fantastic. We're, we're looking for a system that we can share, that's going to meet our needs, not just now, not just 10 years from now, but, you know, we'd like it to be like at least 20-plus years from now. And it's gonna be expensive and it's gonna be a lot of work, but I feel like the, the efficiencies and the benefits that we are going to gain are going to be phenomenal when, once it's all done and implemented for my office, for Linda's office, hopefully Robbie's office too. You know, we're looking at some different packages out there and there's a lot that can be, that can be gained, there's some redundancy now that we're facing that would go away with this, you know, just way better technology, way better security, way better reporting and flexibility in reporting. And so we're, we're really looking forward to that, we're going to be spending the summer with the school department, sort of vetting out several different vendors so that we can come back in the fall and make a capital request for a new package.
Have you talked to other towns about what they're using?
Yeah, I've talked to other towns and, and really, I mean, before we even like really decide, I mean, I want to go to some of these towns, I don't want to just look at the demos, I want to, I want to go there and I want to see their reports, I want to see their chart of accounts, and I want to see, you know, what they like, what they don't like, and really, you know, try to vet out this, this next vendor. Because I mean, we, we have a really fully integrated package that we use for everything. We use, we have general ledger, we have property tax receivables, we have the budget, we have payroll. We don't really have like a good HR module and, you know, we would, we would like to get something like that.
We've professionalized HR a lot in recent years, but we still have to do a man, involving multiple departments, a manual data entry, a paper-based or fillable PDF-based human resources data into these systems because there's no public-facing module or even internally-facing module for our, you know, our employees can't, outside of looking at their pay stubs, they can't log into a portal and check their accruals, they can't see what their rates are, they, it's, it is past time.
Yeah.
So you're on-prem now and you're looking, I'm assuming you're looking for cloud?
Yeah, every, everything is cloud, all the vendors that we're looking at, they're all, they're all on the cloud.
And I assume that's what they're trying to move you towards? So your discussions are going to be cloud offerings versus cloud offerings, but not necessarily like we're just gonna net upgrade to whatever these guys are, are suggesting? That's, that's what your, your due diligence conversations are going to be with other towns to talk through with a variety of different software options?
Right, right. Does, I mean, you know, I'll be honest, there's not, there's not a ton of different vendors out there because municipal accounting software, I mean, it's definitely a specialty and, you know, you're dealing with like fund accounting and you've got to meet different laws and requirements that are unique to municipalities, so.
And it's also really important to go and speak to other, you know, sales are great, but it's sales, right? Every, right, every software package during the sales phase will be perfect and will integrate seamlessly across all things and then, you know, so it's really important. And we did this with building, permitting and other things, we went and just went to those towns and said, can we stand behind you and watch you use this in real time and show me how, you know, they said it could do this report, could, do you know how to do that, were you trained? That kind of thing.
Yeah, I hadn't considered the fact that it's a, it's a subset of a standard financial package, right? Like you have all the various different additional scrutiny that goes along with the town side, so it's, it's a specialist product of an already existing specialist product suite.
Right.
So that's gonna add a lot of complexity to that, that evaluation. But yeah, tap it to the shoulder and be like, go ahead, reconcile that, let's do it.
That's right.
Yeah.
And the interoperability with other, other pieces of that as well, and the, be able to grow with it, like you say, I think 20 years is probably long.
Where's Mike?
But, but the opportunity to be able to, to bring on modules and advance it as you go along is really important too.
Yeah, and I mean, I will say, you know, we, we definitely got our money's worth out of, you know, the package that we have, because we, we bought it for, I mean, under $200,000 back then, I mean, and it was comprehensive for, for everything, and it does integrate pretty well, I have to say, you know, with the collector's receivables and, you know, being able to go from one thing to another, but you just don't have that ability to sort of, you know, like drill down into the detail and, I mean, these other packages, you can, you can, you can actually, you know, look at a transaction and then you kind of drill down and see like the actual invoice that you paid. We don't have that now, it's just nice to be able to have that, that flexibility and that, that information at your fingertips.
We're still doing paper-based authorization for payment.
Is it a one-time purchase cost or do you have like a subscription?
No, when, when it's cloud, everything is subscription, I mean.
There is a one-time cost upfront.
Maintenance fee anyway.
Big one.
Yes.
To a, to a vendor. So the big, the big outlay is going to be your, the cost of implementation, data migration, training.
We're looking at probably a half million.
Yeah.
That was about to do my question.
It's in the capital budget, but we'll go into it in a lot of detail Wednesday night, but it's in there for probably fall.
So on, on that, I know you're kicking tires on a variety of vendors, so I hope you don't have a particularly high-fidelity answer, but that, what you're looking at, you are considering all those different pieces as well as the ongoing steady-state costs for going forward. I'm asking just because half a million actually sounds delightfully low to me.
Yeah, well, the, the ongoing cost we would expect would be higher than what we currently bear as well. So we're, I mean, this is, it's just like the discussion with IT and again, I assume you're seeing this on your side of the table in private sectors, there's a lot of upside to moving things to the cloud, but there, there is increased costs and so we're, we're working on it.
Oh, absolutely. Cloud's not cheaper.
No, it's not.
There are other benefits, but that's not one of them.
Right.
Now, our annual maintenance will, will at least double. You know, we're probably paying about, I think about around $55,000 now for soft rate for everything. And that is at least going to double, triple.
Yeah. But one of the really important things, you know, to Brian's point about burnout, is where we can make those moves and you have a recurring cost that's not personnel and it will free up and improve workflows so that we are eliminating redundancies that are in our, you know, I'm not going to be the person who says that therefore we can composition, but can't, we're really understaffed, but that person can then actually get to other very important work that they simply just cannot do.
There's an operational efficiency.
Correct.
Yeah. That's also, that's the real sort of discussion point typically with implementation upfront costs is that.
Yeah, it's the justification.
This is the pure justification to scale this to the, to the reality needs to be instead of having yet another employee have a part-time job of doing that work.
Correct.
Right.
Of workarounds to dated software.
I do have one comment before we move on. So you started off by saying you're less visible than other departments, which is very true, but I think to us, at least the select board, we see you more than anyone else. And I think that, you know, your, your department's collective wisdom is integral piece of our municipal success, like you are the lifeblood, the gatekeeper of all of this, so without you and your department, we wouldn't be where we're at. So just wanted to make that known for anybody who's listening, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well said, Mark.
Very well said.
Very nice.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to take a five-minute break now and before Robbie? Why don't we do that, just to get up and move for a second?
We process from the registry of motor vehicles excise tax bills, motor vehicle excise tax bills. We do not set the values. That's all based on legislation, state legislation. It's a percentage of the original MSRP. We collect data for chapter land, parcel property, income and expense for commercial and industrial properties. All the exemptions go through our office, except for the newest one that there's a committee for. We're responsible for all lot splits and parcel IDs as well as addresses in town. We're responsible for new growth, which we do a number of ways. One is through building permits and then just regular inspections, whether they're sales inspections, cyclical inspections, abatement inspections. And we're, we're the gatherer of information for the tax recap, for setting the tax rate and for giving information to the selectmen so they can do their classification hearing. As far as the budget, the personnel part is all contractual. Our department, like the other departments, the assistant department head or my assistant was broken out from the clerical salaries this year. We looked at increasing training with the new assessors assistant. We're trying to get her up to speed fairly quickly. She's taken three courses so far and there's three, well, four more courses she needs to take to get her certification. Also, they've changed. We, it used to be a three-year recertification, now it's a two-year, so that, that increased also. I increased the dues memberships because we're spending more than what we've had budgeted for the last couple of years. We increased the expense for the board because this year we do have a new board member, which will have to take some courses, hopefully more, so that we can try to get our members certified as well. And probably the biggest increase in expense was from the data processing. That's where our licensing fees for our software, NIMAP, which we use, that, that increased. Commercial industrial valuations, the interim and the revalue, those have increased. We had one person that used to do it, that used to work for a vend, one of the vendors and unfortunately he went back to the vendor, so we were paying like half price basically than what the vendor charges with him. And we lost him unfortunately, so we're going back to, we're going to have to have a, a vendor, which is one of the companies. I think that's everything. If anyone has any questions.
Anything from our side?
I do, Robbie. The training for, for the assistant assessor, what you've done with that, what's that going to afford her? Like what, what's she doing to do above what she can do now? Is it going to?
Everything.
Everything. So is it going to free up your time?
Um, hopefully, yes. Yes, I mean, right now.
Not hopefully, but certainly.
Well, hopefully, because we haven't had a good track record for the last five years or so with COVID. We lost, we went down to a half position, so we lost somebody that was in the position for a year and a half. We split the position with the treasurer collector's position and then the following year we went back to full-time, but we ended up with a new person again. We had retirements, so.
There's been a lot of turnover. Robbie's had to.
Yeah, I've, I've lost people that, you know, i- it's nice to have someone where you don't have to keep telling people, you've got to work on this, or you've got to work on that. When they come to you and say, hey, I'm working on this, is that all right? We're getting there slowly.
That's right.
And hopefully after the assessors assistant gets certified, she'll be able to do more of that.
So it sounds like the 1800 increases might be too well spent.
I'm hoping so. You know, we talk, tonight there was a lot of talk about technology and as good as technology is, there's also some bad sides with technology because department revenue, they want more reports now. So it, technology is wonderful and it's great. It helps, it's better than when people used to, you know, you get the story, the people that used to have the files this big when they used to do new growth, everything by hand, now it's all on the computer, which is great, saves tons of time. But now, I mean, even the last three years, now we have to document all the growth. So we have to document every parcel, we have to run a report and we have to show, we have to explain what it is. So it's more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you do every building in Easton, every year?
Any growth, I have to show, explain what the growth was. They are talking about possibly, they've been updating things with technology, so hopefully shortly it's not going to be as repetitive. Right now I've got to fill it out, I've got to load it in, so I've got to do it two or three times. But hopefully they're working on, I was just at a conference last Thursday where they're, they're updating some of the, some of the gateway. So hopefully soon that's going to eliminate some of that, which would be nice. I mean, I still, when we do inspections, I always keep it because I always review all the, I try to review all, I should say, I try to review all data entry and I usually do, but that also makes it when someone calls, when the department revenue calls and says, hey, why do you have growth on this? Because I review it, I usually know it pretty good. So that helps.
Anyone on the select board?
No questions? I think Robbie does a good job, so thank you for your. Thank you.
Thanks, Robbie. I see, I feel I've heard a theme of training tonight through the different departments, so I'm glad that people are mentioning that. I think it's important for sustainability in the department and also to have a pathway for people to grow and stay here. You know, we've also heard the longevity of the staff that have been here for, you know, quite a while, so everyone's going to start retiring at the same time if we don't have people in the pipeline to understand those jobs.
Well, that's one thing we're finding statewide also. That's one thing that the Mass Assessors Association has made some new certifications available that, whether it's a clerk, an appraiser, they can, they can reach some of these certifications so that they can move up, because there's a lot of positions open. The, the town of Dartmouth has been open for over a year. They had one person that went there, they worked there about a month and then they went someplace else somewhere closer to their home. So that's something that we're finding also. And I don't think it's just in assessing, I think, all the positions, it's get, you know, people get into the point of retirement and we're losing a lot of the knowledge that people have.
Is it mostly programmatic training or is it on-the-job training for the most part? Like effectively you, you have to do it to get full grasp of it, so people have to choose to join up.
Um, both. I, I received my Massachusetts accredited assessor while I was a board member before I, I got into the field. In fact, going for it was what got me into the field because I was taking the classes and I was sitting at a table with a group of assessors working in the field and they wanted me to explain how to do something. I'm like, oh, wait a minute, maybe I can do this. And that's how I got into the field. So where they're finally letting people, not just board members, but they're letting appraisers, because I mean, appraisers, they get, they got hit pretty hard.
Right.
You know, with the, with what they have to do now with the last crisis. So a lot of them are moving out and moving into the, moving into assessing and other things, so. And even realtors, I feel all realtors should have to take assessing 101 so they can explain and help their, their customers learn, because you'd be surprised how many people come in and they don't realize, you know, they paid $700,000 and at some point we're going to be at $700,000.
Right.
I had two, I had three people saying, you know, the market was crazy, that was the market back then. And I said, well, thank you, you, you proved my case. And they're like, well, I said, well, that's what I'm saying, that was the market.
That's what we're.
So that's, you know, there's nothing I can do to help you.
Yeah.
So.
Patrick, on that point though, and as Dottie noted as well, and the finance departments as well as the town clerks, you notice we're breaking out some of what was formerly lumped in with clerical salaries to be assistant department headline because we're working with the union that's involved, the clerical union. And through bargaining this round for the first time in two decades, we're able to do a classification and job analysis to make sure that we're, you know, appropriately kind of reflecting the professionalization of these roles, paying appropriately to retain people and to try to help alleviate some of the industry-wide problem that Robbie's talking about, particularly in these much smaller departments where, you know, succession planning is pretty hard when it's a two or three-person shop. So we're taking steps there with labor to try to position us for.
This is probably the first year I'm going to be using as much, as many vendors to help with valuing, because I just don't have the time to do everything.
Right.
Not, not in stay sane.
Have you tried sleepingless?
Actually, sometimes during, while I'm sleeping, it, it helps because some, an issue that I had, it comes clear.
I'm sure there's nothing like a property valuation with like, you know, the 3:00 AM visit with a high-powered flashlight to really set the residence on.
Oh, yeah. I've got to say, in Easton, people are very good about setting up appointments. You know, there are some people, I have a good friend that always tells me, if you're coming over, as my friend, you're welcome anytime. If you're coming over the assessor, stop at the driveway, don't even come in the yard. But you know, it only helps them. And you'd be surprised, I always tell this story and people laugh, but you know, when people, you know, you have your summer cookouts and everyone's over and you have your winter parties and everyone's over and all of a sudden come abatement season when the actual bill goes out in January, you have everyone coming in and say, well, you know, I know Connor has a finished basement and he's not being assessed for that. Why isn't that? I'm not saying that's happening. He's just there. I haven't looked at Connor's house lately.
Lately.
On that note.
You should, we should.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, Robbie.
Actually, that's one of the things that department revenue does require, that we do, like both of assessors, selectmen, that we do make sure that our data is up to date.
That's been common though, right? We're, we're clear.
You know, I, I never look at the names when I'm doing an inspection because it doesn't matter who you are.
Sure.
And I've been accused not working here, but in other, you're reason my assessment because you know like what I make and you know my last name and it's like, you know, it doesn't matter, it's all the numbers. And I couldn't do that anyway because the department revenue wouldn't let us.
Thanks, Robbie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Could I ask a quick question, Connor? When we look at the budgets and we see the increases due to data expenses, is that going to be per department or is that going to be like a general line item, fixed costs?
In what regard? Are you, are we tying it back to the cybersecurity?
Yeah, I mean, are we going to see like IT take an increase?
So the IT budget will be increasing significantly for a lot of the kind of enterprise-wide things that we do.
Okay.
But then there are these smaller kind of boutique software packages that some departments have, like the assessors with Vision, where they have incremental costs as well. So there's, there's not all subscription and, and data-related costs for the town are not aggregated in a single line.
Very well. Thank you.
Linda, thank you for your patience. It's been a long night. Next year we should do it backwards so that the people who went late this time go early next time.
Or maybe next year I'll have an awesome, you know, PowerPoint, but not this year.
Can you borrow the buzzer system from Doyle's?
Yeah.
Buzzing.
Good evening. My name is Linda Hawks. I've been the treasurer for Easton for six and a half years and then another three years before that with another much smaller town and have really enjoyed my time here. As the treasurer collector's department name would indicate, we're sort of a split department. There's the treasury half, which deals sort of on a, on a big level with borrowing money with the, in conjunction or with the finance director. We handle all of the money of the town. All of the money of the town comes through the treasurer's office and then it gets accounted for and then ultimately, once checks are cut by accounting, it comes back out through the treasury. So all of the money is coming in and then out. The treasurer's department also handles payroll and benefit for all of the employees in the town, as well as about 600 retirees that, that used to work for the town. We have about 1,200 employees right now. We administer the health insurance and all of the benefits for the employees and the retirees and that would include your $10.5 million health insurance budget that we have. But in addition to that, there's also dental insurance. We have life insurance that we have to administer, including the claims, supplemental insurance, the town offers FSA for healthcare and also dependent care. Those benefits are administered through the treasurer's office. So on a day-to-day basis, payroll and benefits takes up a lot of our time, but that certainly isn't the only thing that treasury does. On the collector's side of things, we obviously collect all of the taxes of the town, but we also receive all of the fees that people are paying to the town. That includes sending out about 100,000 bills every year. Right now we have it timed pretty, pretty nicely so that every month a different type of bill is coming due so that the collectors aren't overwhelmed. And then in addition to sending out the bills and then collecting all of the money from the billing, we also have to send out. and then collecting all of the money from the billing, we also have to send out any of the delinquency notices and any other action that might need to be taken for delinquent accounts, including the, the ever-popular $30 demand fees that get put on your excise tax bills, which will be coming out in a couple of weeks. If anybody has forgotten to pay their excise tax bill. About a third of the bills that we send out are excise tax bills. Another third or almost another third are the water bills. And then the, the other third is taken up with real estate, personal property and trash. I am a certified Massachusetts municipal treasurer and as the treasurer of the town, I am an ex officio member of the taxation aid committee. And I'd like to speak a little bit about the taxation aid committee in a couple of minutes. We do have five people in the combined department. We have the, myself, the treasurer collector, an assistant treasurer collector. We have two principal clerks, which I, I unofficially call the collectors of the town. And then also the payroll coordinator is in the, in the treasurer's department. So between all of us, we've had a lot of shifting of personnel, but we, as of January 3rd of this year, we are back up to full staff. And I'm hoping that that's going to remain that way for a little while. Because five people is adequate. And, and it, we work well with the five people. But I also am going to address that at the very end of this. So, all right, as far as the budget goes, coming forward into fiscal year 24, it's a 4.64% increase, made up mostly like others, contractual obligations for the, for the personnel. Also, I do have an assistant whose salary has been broken out, split out from the clerical or the administrative salaries this year. The only increase in my operating budget is a $1,000 increase for printing the tax bills. We had to change printers this year. If anybody got a water bill around January, it was horrible. But, so we switched printers and then we had to switch printers again. And I will need another $1,000 to cover the cost of, of the new printer. But other than that, it's just a very modest increase. We have a lot going on in our department, but from an operational budget standpoint, we can, we can maintain with very little increases this year. Despite our sort of boring operational budget and the fact that our staff is remaining the same, payroll is getting more and more complex every year. We also send out all of the W2s and the 1095Cs for the town. That happens in-house. And so, you know, that is just, there's just another little law every year that you have to follow. There's also for this, this year, for the first time, we had a split tax rate, as you all know. That added a little extra level of complexity to getting the tax bills out the door. I, as far as the taxation aid committee goes, that's a committee that was set up a few years ago. COVID interrupted the implementation of that committee, but then we got up and going, had one round of maybe $5,000 that we were able to have donated to the town. And then we dispersed to people who applied for that aid. ARPA funding has come in very helpful. In fiscal year 22, we expended $50,000 of ARPA funds in addition to just a couple thousand dollars of the taxation aid committee funds. And the committee in fiscal year 23, so far, we have given out 51 payments of $1,400 each to different people who applied for that aid. And we, I have got another 10 applications in my office that we'll be reviewing at least those 10 in May so that we can hopefully use the rest of the ARPA money that was given, that was, that was donated to us or given to us or allocated to us from ARPA funds. Additionally, as part of the payroll, and I know I'm going a little bit back and forth, but this is part of fiscal year 24, or will be part of fiscal year 24, the town administers incentive programs as a cost-saving measure. Connor and other very smart people have come up with ways to save money on health insurance, which is, is always a big expense. So we've come up with incentives and opt-out programs for the health insurance. Last year, I, it was only about maybe, I forget exactly, but I'm going to say somewhere like low $30,000 to $40,000 maybe, that we were able to save through incentives and opt-outs. In fiscal year 23, we were able to save $105,000 just by incentivizing intelligent choices or different choices, not intelligent, that was the wrong word, different choices for your healthcare, for your health insurance. Coming forward into fiscal year 24, there's been some plan changes by the GIC for the health insurance. And I expect that the incentive plans are going to be much more robustly used in fiscal year 24 because there's hundreds of people who are going to be forced to change their health insurance anyways. If you're a lazy consumer like me, you don't want to be bothered with all of that change. You know, you just, you can't be bothered. This year, I'm going to be forced to change anyways. So why not capitalize on that and, and change it to a low-cost plan for the town? So I think I'm lazy, but I'm probably a typical consumer. It's the way a lot of people think. So.
Linda's underselling the, the data analytics and the background that she and her department do, but it's basically a savings share model where, you know, the town pays 75% of premiums for our employees on health plans. And so they switch to a more cost-effective plan to save some money in their weekly contributions. But there's also savings to us and we split up a portion of that and basically do a bonus payment to people if they voluntarily switch plans. And so in the past four years, we're nearing about a quarter million dollar reduction to a fixed cost budget, thanks to Linda's work. So it's been really helpful.
Yeah. It's, it's, I was pleased to see that it was used so nicely in fiscal year 20, 23. So although my budget is, is pretty boring, we've got a lot going on. We've got a lot of stuff going on and, and we can maintain that and, and do better with that with just the same amount, with basically the same amount of money. Going forward, past fiscal year 24, I'm just going to put a little plug in for that, the shared management analyst. There's a lot of things that I don't have time to do. I had a collector once upon a time who was there long enough so that he was able to do some of this analysis for me, figure out what percentage of the tax bills are being paid online, which percentage are being paid through, on, through the lockbox service or something like that. And that can help us drive better systems for tax and fee payments. I haven't had the opportunity to do it, but I'd like to put a plug in for that position. But I'd also, going forward, I'd like to be able to find a little bit of time to modernize how people can pay their taxes and more specifically, how people can pay fees. There's been a lot of discussions about, well, can we use Venmo or Square or something like that, especially from a lot of the committees that we have. The humans right, the human rights committee has approached the finance director just recently. I know farmer's market was looking for a better way to have, to accept payment. Certainly with the 300th anniversary committee that's going to get going very soon. And the school always has things going on, that they could use more modern ways of, of getting the money to the town. We haven't been able to, because of legal constraints and, and, you know, payment agreements with those payment processors, we haven't been able to find a good fit yet. Not to mention, you know, there's a Venmo business or something like that. But there's no good way for that payment processing thing to tell me, the treasurer, who just made a payment. And that's, that is, that's where we're coming into a, a rock wall right now. I'd like to investigate that and get that going forward. Wendy mentioned the software. No one likes to change, but I'd, I'd be excited to see some new software that can, that can do some better things, especially since we're doing payroll all in-house. So I'd like to do that. Other than that, that's kind of, that's kind of us in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. For the breaking out of the clerical salaries, that 60,000 represents the assistant department head?
Yes. And then she got moved up to the next step up.
At 72. So that's a, like a 20% increase. Is there a reason for that increase?
I can't speak to that.
That should, let me, I lost my page. Let me pull, that, I would imagine is a typo because there's not a 20% increase in the bargaining. Oh, okay. So you're looking at the subtraction out of clerical salaries versus what it ends up at?
Yes.
So some of that could be reflective of clerical salaries and this department had four personnel, two left in this year and were replaced with newer employees at lower rates. So the net impact there may have obscured what that assistant department head was making. But, but there's not a 20% adjustment on that salary.
So that 60 is not reflective directly of just that person's salary?
Correct. And there's also been other adjustments in that collective bargaining unit, that restructure of the pay scale, shortening it and increasing marginally from two to two and a quarter percent the steps because these are positions that sometimes start on, you know, the twenties per hour. And it just have been, this economy takes too long for that to be a sustainable amount of growth. We're seeing unacceptably high turnover. So some of the newer folks who came in even at step one were at a higher rate.
Yeah. I didn't know maybe you were trying to like cross departments have a similar separate range.
We are. So we have, we have comp, compensation and pay plans for every employee and department. Anything else to answer?
You had a comment, I guess more than anything else. I applaud the attempt for creative payments. I adore and make heavy use of the current online services for paying bills. It's, it's an enormous benefit extending that more generally to the conversation we were having before about accounting and HR software and really everything that we do here. I think it's critical that we make a concerted effort to be looking ahead at digitally transforming our government. I think it's the sort of thing where we're inclined to say, that might be a little bit more upfront, that might be representative of a change. What I think, what it, what it represents to our community and what it represents long term to our ability to say we're, we're doing the right thing and making the most of what's available to us, I would practically be criminal not to dig deeply into that. So it's commentary. It's not really a question, but I applaud that you're doing that and hope that whenever we start to look at things, we contemplate, how do people want to interact with groups that they do business with? So it's, it's just for, thank you.
Want to add one?
No questions.
I would just comment on one of the things that, that I think of, what I think of your, you particularly in your department is, and it probably seems like a weird word to use, but your thoughtfulness and compassion in dealing with people. So I know that when you came on, we started looking at auctioning, auctioning off tax title properties, which was a big increase in funds back to the town. But it also gave an opportunity for people that couldn't settle that to be able to pay and settle that so that it wouldn't have to go to tax title. And I know that there's been other occasions where you've had these anomalies. And what I've heard from you is you are, you have a very thoughtful approach at, let's work with people, like Corey was talking about in his presentation. Let's meet people where they are. Let's give them the tools to be able to, to get out of those dilemmas. You have always strived to help people and to help them be successful at managing those things. And I think that's probably something that people don't realize or don't think about. Because if you're talking to the collector, if we're talking to you, it's probably not a good thing, right? And I will say, I've gotten the penalty on the, on the excise. So you only do that once before you remember to pay those on time. But, you know, those are, those are things that people, people have a lot of reasons why that happens. And some things, there's flexibility on, some things, there's not, some things is a learning opportunity to make sure you pay those on time. So thank, thank you for the way you treat people, Linda.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I might have accidentally sent the wife and, wait a minute, did we pay our access to it?
I'm sorry.
Hey, it's my fault.
You want to set up the auto pay, the online thing? It's great. I have not had that phone since.
I'll just say I'm sorry in advance.
That's how we know it's February.
Right.
So I don't know, Wendy, your, so the next budget, we have debt service, benefits, insurance, other expenses. So maturating debt and interest is page 60 in your line item detail. So you have your traditional kind of income and expense look there on your year. And then there is a couple of pages of the, three pages of the actual maturating debt interest budget schedule, including the year of maturity, principal interest on every single outstanding debt payment that we have. So overall, though, debt service budget is a really marginal increase this year, 2.48%, given how late it is. I suppose we would just ask everybody else, any questions about the debt budget?
All fixed rate debt?
Right. This is, this is mostly, it's a combination of non-exempt debt, which, which we have to fit within the operating budget and then the exempt debt on the school project. The increase is the exempt debt. So non-exempt debt was basic, was level.
And I'm excited that if you look all the way at the bottom, there is roughly $700,000 of non-exempt bonds maturing in the next three fiscal years. Is that right? Out of the $2.7 million spend, that's good as. But Wendy, see the capital budget.
We're going to need that capacity for the capital budget.
Well, I think that, you know, looking at this, it's not my area of expertise, but we talk about this when we're looking at bringing on new projects and the capital. And I am grateful that we have smart people like you, Hugh and Linda and your team to be able to translate this back to us in layman's terms so that we can understand it. Because it was very useful when we were looking at building the new school and what's coming off and what's starting and what are the bands and what do those mean? And how does that help finance a large project? So I couldn't really explain it to somebody else, but I, I understand the gist of it. And I've learned a lot about that and why it's so important, why the credit rating is so important and the millions of dollars that we save by having a good credit rating and how that could easily change if we didn't stick to our financial principles, things that are really hard to do in really hard years. We've had to make very difficult decisions with that, but we can see the results of it. It's one of those things that if you do it right, it, it works. If you don't, it's too late. You've already, you've already done it in a way that's going to be harmful. So thank you very much for that.
One thing I do want to add that when, when we're looking at the capital budget and the needs and the debt service and everything is that, you know, whenever possible, we really should look at our non-exempt debt and try to put some kind of escalation on that every year to, to have some growth in that. Otherwise, that's just going to stay stagnant and it's going to become a lower percentage of the budget and our capacity to, to borrow and take on new debt will be, you know, constricted if it doesn't, if there isn't any growth in that category.
Take a lot of debts so you can take out more debt.
Well, either take on, either take on debt or.
Or just increase the budget line, even if you're not necessarily anticipating spending it at the end of the year or close to free cash. That can be a really hard call to make.
Or use it as one-time money. Or use it as one-time money for capital. So like, if you look at the line item detail, there's a very small, I think it's like twenty-eight hundred dollars in the capital reserve. That was basically so the non-exempt debt totals didn't decrease from the prior year. So that's what we would, you know, be looking to do if we did not have enough debt service to meet that increase.
So are you looking to increase the debt or just keep the percentage of debt stable?
The percentage of debt are the percentage of the capacity that's sort of dedicated to capital items. So if you don't have debt service...
That's looked at by Moody's as well, right? They look at it as shorthand for, are you appropriately investing in the capital assets of your community? So if you have years where some debt service is falling off, you say, great, that's a net savings. You cut that budget and reallocate it somewhere else, and you don't have that capacity to continue to do the borrowing you need to do on building, repairs, new roads, things of that nature. So we want to make sure that we keep that non-exempt debt. Is it roughly what? Our total debt, including exempt, is seven million this year. That's less than seven percent of a budget. So generally, you're looking between five and eight percent in that area to make sure that you're appropriately spending on those assets.
The budget goes up every year, so if you were to stay at seven percent, you'd be borrowing?
Correct. You'd be proportional. Well, there's a lot of factors that impact that right based on rates in the market. When you borrow, you may not necessarily... If you keep the debt service budget tagged exactly to seven percent, what that translates into into the market based on the cost of construction materials and the rate of money is not always perfectly comparable. But given those factors, to have your debt service budget decreasing while the cost of money is going up and supplies would be an indicator that you are not investing.
Great point. All right. There's no other questions? We go on to other general government?
Sorry, actually, there's...
Did I miss something?
Yeah, so employee benefits and insurance is a separate item. That's page sixty-four.
Oh, sorry.
So here, you have a four point seven percent increase. These are almost entirely fixed costs, but again, just in the interest of time, I guess Wendy, if you want, if there's any highlights you want to point out.
Yeah, so this budget includes employee health insurance, the annual transfer to the OPEB trust fund of twenty-five thousand. It also includes the retirement assessment. The retirement assessment was up six point one-three percent, which is larger than the overall increase, but it's lower than it could have been. We take advantage every year of paying the assessment upfront in July so that we save, usually save, I think it's around a hundred thousand. I think there might be a note in the budget for that as to how much we save.
A hundred and one thousand.
Yes.
Yes. So we take advantage of that. The other thing is the... All the insurances that we were talking about before, workers' comp insurance, the property liability insurance. Cyber is not a separate line in our insurance. When they break down the policy, it's like included in there, but it's in there. Insurance is going to go up a little bit more this year because the Blanche Ames School is now being insured. That's a much higher property value than the other schools. So that definitely had a significant increase of like a hundred thousand dollars plus.
Sorry, we still have to carry some level of insurance for this school, but we're at the same time, right?
Yes.
For two of them. One of them's gone.
Yeah.
That's true.
It's a nice field.
Yeah.
But yes, we are continuing to insure Moreau and Center while we go through the kind of procurement preparation process, and we'll keep it insured until it's sold.
And then just a couple of other items in here. So Medicare, the town share and the school share. So we don't... We only pay the Medicare portion. We don't pay the FICA part of social security. So the one point four, five percent employees get that withheld, and then the town has to match that. So those lines are in here as well. So yeah, overall, it's up four point seven one percent. It is, you know, it's a big item in the budget, but I feel like it could have been a lot worse, so.
Yeah, for health insurance of this...
For fixed costs. So any questions?
Questions on our side?
No questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right, then one more about Wendy and Lynda. On line item, page sixty-five, other general government. That's eight point two-nine percent. Am I on the right one?
Wait, what is...
No, this is for...
Is that... Oh, the...
Here we go.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Yep.
All right.
Yep. Other expenses were an item that they're not subject to appropriation, but we have to factor those into the budget. So they're included in the budget summary, but they won't be a budget that's voted on at town meeting. Those other expenses are basically your state and county assessments that get netted off of your state aid distribution and the amount that you set aside for what we call overlay, which is the allowance for abatements and exemptions from the property tax revenue. Other general government, this is sort of like a little catch-all for a bunch of miscellaneous items. The money we spend for the postage meter, so, you know, like town hall-wide postage is in there, the audit fee is in there, our assessment that we pay every year to SIRSSAGE, which is the Southeastern Regional Services Group. They do some joint procurements for us for DPW and office supplies. That's in there. Veterans and Memorial Days for the parade, that's in there as well. So it's a small increase, three point five nine percent. There was a little escalation put on for anticipation of increase in audit fees, and also postage went up to like sixty cents an envelope. So we just put an extra money in there as well. Any questions?
Questions on the...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, we have planning and economic development. Stephanie could be here tonight. She was double booked, as is the case very regularly, the planning and zoning board or another board was meeting tonight. So Assistant Town Administrator, the chart's going to fill in and just give a quick summary of that departmental budget and their mission.
Try to be quick. I know we're in the home stretch here. Stephanie just shared some notes. So the department helps Easton ensure growth and development occurs in a way that preserves Easton's historic and environmental resources, creates housing options for Easton residents at all income levels, enhances agriculture and recreational opportunities, provides safe and efficient transportation options, and promotes economic viability. In that role, staff is responsible for working with various boards and committees to develop and act on strategic and working plans, such as the master plan, open space and recreation plan, housing production plan, various economic development plans, community preservation plan, all to achieve specific defined goals established by the residents of Easton. The department provides administrative technicals for the eight boards. That includes the planning and zoning board, conservation commission, affordable housing trust, community preservation committee, historical commission, agricultural commission, economic development council, and the zoning board of appeals. The department also identifies, applies for, and administers various infrastructure, planning, natural resource restoration, and mitigation funding opportunities. Just a couple of notes. The planning department budget is level service plus only contractual increases, which is the three point two-five percent. In this last year, the department reviewed and processed two-hundred-and-thirty-eight applications, which is an increase of thirty percent over the past four years. They also applied for and received six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in infrastructure and planning grants, bringing in, you know, additional revenue to the town. So if you have any questions, I will do my best to make something up.
So much selling of sales short.
Do you know if that grant money is multi-year grant money or something like that?
I don't. They work for specific projects.
Yeah, it's project specific.
Yeah, project specific. So that included some of the sidewalks on Lincoln Street, housing choice for Foundry Street design, some housing choice money to look at Brockton wastewater capacity. So they are project specific.
That's great.
Specifically for us.
Yes, yes.
Capacity.
And do they... Does the department have to write the grant for that?
Yes, largely. So again, we don't have any dedicated grant writers, so we work together depending on the subject area of the grant. Stephanie's department administers a substantial amount of them for the town.
That's wonderful.
There's a lot of reporting and compliance about it, and they do really, really great work. And it's... I feel like it's probably more years, but not particularly lately where they bring in more grant money than their, you know, you're talking almost double their operating budget. And it's really important. It ties into really important policy compliance goals as well with, you know, lining yourself up to be a housing choice community means that you're not only complying with forty B, but that you're creating opportunities for diverse housing growth. That dovetails into a variety of other infrastructure-based grants where the state wants to put its money in communities that are trying to do the right thing and invest in themselves and create opportunity for people. That flows into things like whether the MSBA is going to invite you to build a new school and pay for it. So there's really extraordinary compounding dividends on that work. So we're very appreciative of what they do. And the eight-plus boards that they serve as well.
And Easton has a tremendous reputation with the state of using investment dollars in the way they want to see it. So that makes us more attractive to gain more. We had the executive office of housing and economic development down a couple of years ago, gave them a tour and said, here's what we've done with all your grant money. And that really put us in line to get a lot of funding that helped us with the sewer capacity down in Five Corners. And we like to share those stories. Sometimes when I'm in my day job, I'll hear somebody talking about a story in a community, and it was Easton, of how we were leaders in a lot of different areas in planning and economic development. So they do a lot of great work through that department. And Stephanie personally is very well-recognized across the state in her planning capacity, so we're very lucky to have her here. She left and came back again, so. All right. Moving on to the next. We've got select board slash town administration.
Sorry, my computer went to sleep. What page are we on? We are page six. So thank you all for sticking out for a long night. I'll try to read through my remarks really quickly. So select board's chief policymaking body of the town, a chief elected body of the town. They set the overall vision and direction for the community in coordination with all the other boards and committees. Select board appoints a town administrator to serve as the chief administrative officer of the town, and also to provide executive leadership for the town in areas of policy formation, fiscal affairs, labor relations, and organizational development. Our office is the chief executive office of the community, responsible for the town's financial management and coordination of all governmental service delivery. The select board appoints, in addition to the town administrator and finance director, about a hundred and fifty volunteer board and committee members across a variety of really important regulatory boards. And the town administrator appoints all non-school personnel for all municipal departments, with the exception of a finance director and the VSO. We're responsible for human resources administration, contract negotiation covering approximately a hundred and sixty town employees across seven different labor unions, procurement, licensing, risk management, management of the town's property casualty liability insurances, relations with other levels of government, state, regional, state, and federal. We are responsible for calling of town meetings, the posting of warrants, and our office also supports the administrative function of two to three meetings of this type per month for the select board. The select board also serves as a water commission for the community, and since 2012, the sewer commission and the rent control board for the mobile home park. In my capacity, in addition to serving the board, I'm a vice chair of the SEMREC Regional Board of Directors for the regional nine-one-one. I'm a member of the budget subcommittee, the school planning committee, and many in our office and on the board. Also serve on a variety of regional and statewide policy committees with the Massachusetts Municipal Association Legislative Panels and things of that nature. Our staff includes four personnel, most of whom are here, myself, the assistant town administrator, one executive assistant, one HR position. Working with the finance director, we're responsible for production of the operating and capital, five-year capital improvement plan for the community. So we talked a little bit about staff levels. So despite kind of growing regulatory responsibilities, a growing community, and an already really large and complex scope under our jurisdiction, our office has maintained the same staff level since 2017, which is the same that it's had since the nineties. The community's grown by twenty-five percent in population during that time. And the level of complexity that has been expected of municipal management has grown significantly. In 2017, there was an operational audit in the wake of a failed operational override to look at our management functions and all of our functions and see, you know, well, gee, is there a better way to, you know, skim a cat here? Do we have enough people? Do we have too many people? Are they overpaid? That type of thing. And at that time, for those functions of administration, procurement, and personnel, our comparable communities, based on population, budget, service level, we're staffing five point two full-time equivalents for those functions. Since then, facing many of the same challenges and, you know, strategic opportunities that we are, those... That average has shifted up. So now the comparable management offices in Easton staff seven full-time equivalent to our four. With encouragement by this board through my own annual goal setting, we propose adding the equivalent of three-quarters of a full-time equivalent in the office. One is a half-time HR assistant, because right now we have one full-time equivalent for the entire HR function for the town government, which is not sustainable. So a half-time add there, plus what's technically a quarter, because we were going to share a management and financial analyst for some of the functions we talked about with accounting, assessing, and collections tonight. To balance the budget, we had to cut the analyst, and we're going to implement that part-timer halfway through the year, which by the end of fiscal twenty-four will bring our staff to four and a half, which is an important step in the right direction, but it's only partial progress towards a more sustainable level. You know, in preparing for tonight, when talking with staff and even trying to follow whatever rules I set, we want to make sure that we're not just being negative. We've been able to accomplish a lot. We have really excellent staff here who punch well above their weight and produce a huge amount of results with a small amount of people. We've made a lot of progress with strategic planning, major capital improvement projects, leveraging mostly state and federal resources and some of the bigger ones. And we've done really significant key regionalization efforts like SEMREC. There are areas of opportunity that we simply can't address adequately with the current staff levels. Some of those include public communications and community engagement. There's just not enough of us and enough time for us to be the places that we would like to be and automate. Devoted leadership-level effort from the executive office on economic development, we do what we can between planning in our office, but again, there's no devoted staff for that. Technical support for procurement across the government, we do not have. I'm the chief procurement officer, so we do what we can, but we don't have anyone whose role is there communities our size that have purchasing departments. And again, we're very fortunate that we have department heads, many of whom go to state-level certification trainings with the IG so that they could do a lot of this. But that's putting a large burden on that staff. And then finally, you know, just overall administrative and analytical effectiveness. There are also emerging issues in municipal government, in need of significant and more staff focus. Some that are, you know, on my mind that I'm looking at are things like climate action plans for communities to be being as serious as they ought to be about taking the steps that they can within their jurisdictions to appropriately prepare for and to the extent on the small scale we are responsible for mitigate for the climate crisis, as well as implementing and responding to a really rapidly evolving area of state and regulatory, state and federal regulatory change, whether it's water with PFAS, you know, bringing on twenty-six million dollars of multi-year capital planning, cybersecurity impacts on insurance. Those are areas that outside of additional staff capacity, you necessarily have to get into kind of triage-based management where you're reacting to those things rather than being proactive. So our twenty-four proposal is an increase of seven point seven-three percent. It'll add a half-time person to the department by the end of the year. That'll take our kind of proportional staffing of our peers from fifty-seven percent of what they typically use to sixty-four percent. So that increase in the budget is entirely in personnel. Our expenses are level funded. And like I said, I want to close on a positive note that despite a small team, we've been able to make some really good progress. You know, we also managed kind of one-off strange projects you wouldn't necessarily assume in an office, like community electricity purchasing. So we've been able to save close to eight million dollars for everyone in Easton by locking in energy rates. We've improved professional policy standards, not just for our personnel, but that the board has adopted for boards and committees. We've transformed our budget, thanks in large part to Wendy, Mike, the... We've transformed our budget, thanks in large part to Wendy, Mike, the department heads, to meet national best practice standards. And we've more than tripled our financial reserves during arguably one of the most stressful times for financial management in government in the past seven years. So I think we've done a really good job and I'm proud of that work and I appreciate the staff's work and the board's commitment to our leadership team and making that happen. So that's our department. Happy to answer any questions.
Good job, Claire. Thank you. Did I hear you correctly that you are planning and bringing on a part-time person towards the end of the year that will start doing some of the management analysis work?
No, we wanted to.
You wanted, okay.
We will not be bringing on any kind of analyst position this year. We just, we couldn't make it fit while doing the juggling of making sure that we're keeping capacity to absorb some of those grant-funded positions. I prioritize the part-time HR position because that is, you know, a kind of core risk management function and the, you know, I felt that, you know, the same picking between your kids, if that was a, if we had to pick, that that was a better add for now.
Okay. And so you also mentioned that you're doing some procurement work as well, or not some, but all of the procurement work? And that for most towns is a full-time position, maybe three-quarters are a full-time position?
So it depends. Some communities have a procurement office where they have one or two positions devoted to that, but not all do. And many, it's, it's not atypical for a town administrator, town manager to be the chief procurement officer, but you would frequently have folks for delegating, and we do to an extent, but they're also doing all the other jobs. So Michael will assist. DPW director Field is an expert in procurement. But that's not necessarily something that you can always count on for, and I always think back to, Michael, I think it was probably six or seven years ago, he said somebody effective individual heroics is not an organizational sustainability plan.
That much.
So we have some really, really high caliber people, which is excellent. And I've made it my mission since being town administrator, which I should have led with, this is my seventh year as town administrator, my 12th in Easton. And again, with the board support and the community support to, you know, start staffing up more appropriately and hiring key deputies, namely any deputies, because we didn't always have that. You know, in the wake of the financial crisis, it was pretty trendy in government to just hollow out, like, you know, if you're not the chief or on the front line, gone. You know, where's the value add of analysts and risk managers and all that? That's, in my opinion, a catastrophically short-sighted thing to do. And so we have been adding that capacity slowly where we can. But we don't have, we don't have the structure in place everywhere. We've made a lot of progress with deputy directors, people like Cory, but we don't currently have anyone who, it's their devoted focus to manage procurement. We provide assistance as we can. We work with town council, which is a contracted service as we can. And it comes and goes in waves. And so right now, you know, we're going through extremely complex procurement work, like with disposal and sale of public property. This building's department will be working on a master plan for fields and athletics, which is awesome, but it's going to be a lot of work. So we do some training in-house, we send folks to IG courses. And so we, I think we do well with what we have, and we do not have anyone whose sole function is to do that.
Any plans to?
Would love to.
Maybe merge the two positions, maybe merge the two roles of analyst and contracting?
Again, I would love to, but it's, you know, maybe five-plus years down the road, if you start with an analyst-type position and you start, you see where that bandwidth is. But the challenge that we have consistently seen in my tenure, whether I was, you know, an entry level job quite a while ago or doing this one, is that when we do make those limited spaces to add a position, like the case of the mental health liaison, day one or two, they're full. And so it's, we have, we have not seen a lot of opportunity for the more financial managerial and technical analytical jobs to consolidate responsibilities, because there's already, there's frankly too many. Because I think, and if anyone's responsible for that, it's me. I'm responsible for the budget and we have made a conscious choice that where we can make improvements, we have tried to prioritize in areas of human services and, you know, it's, it's a very delicate balance.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of the work that you do for the town.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a question, Claire. Actually, Shereen brought this up at our last meeting about when was the last time the elected salaries were increased? I know we also want to maintain a really robust select board. And so we were wondering when the last time that increase happened and if there's ever been a comparison to other towns of a similar size, what they do?
That is a good question, and it has probably never is.
I think it's ever happened.
So, and that's something I'll defer to Dottie and the board, but the board actually weighs that, because under our charter, for some reason, you have this like 100 and something million dollar omnibus article, but the elected official salary gets its own article at town meetings. So I think there's a lot of incentive, just say like, nah, just leave it alone. But I know we have not done that analysis, but in the board, we can certainly.
I think it's important. I mean, maybe people on the board right now aren't, don't care so much because they're committed to this, but if we want to continue having a strong board and a diverse board, people from all different walks of life being able to participate in this work, you know, sometimes could really be compensated for their time.
Right.
Because they can't afford to just donate it, so.
It's, it's a good point, and we can certainly look at it. And it's one of the kind of structural challenges and potential shortfalls of the system of government that we have, right? Because it's not just the board with very, very small stipends. We have over 150 citizens that, you know, if you're on a planning board or you're on a CONCOM or ZVA, I mean, these are multi, just like if you're on a finance committee, these are multi-hour commitments. So it's a, it's a point well taken that it is, it is hitting, you know, societal challenges where people are working more than ever across all industries, right? Because no one, it's like with computing, right? It's like, oh, yeah, yeah, three times the RAM now. And instead, you know, software designers, no offense, Patrick, I don't think that's directly you, but instead of just making the existing package run better, they fill it with blowware and other things. And so like, the highway just instantly fills, right? So everyone is being so efficient, but there's just more, people are expected to do more in their, their personal lives and their professional lives, and it's hard, it's hard. It's asking in a tremendous amount of the elected officials and the community to say, you know, also please.
Respond to a pandemic.
Yes.
I think you bring up an excellent point. We kind of talked about this at one of our meetings. So the school committee doesn't get any compensation at all. Easton, we always joke in the Mass Municipal, we make the high four figures. It's, it's.
Which is actually not even true. It's below four figures.
Below four figures. But, you know, places that have town councils or city councils, they make a little bit more, but that, that's more of their full-time job. I don't think that anybody, certainly, we don't do this for the money, but it actually costs us money to do this because we have to go to a lot of things, we get invited to a lot of things, we have a lot of travel. There's a lot of cost to doing this. What I most think of that stands out is I really care about bringing younger people to have a diversity of age on our boards and committees. And younger people, we see this on our board. Mark had to leave tonight, Jamie's not here tonight, Jen's not going to be here Wednesday. When we have younger people with younger families, they're balancing a lot more things. One of those things is childcare. And you can't, you know, you, you're going to now take out of pocket to hire babysitters when necessary. With campaign finance laws, you can use your campaign account to do things like attend a gala or, you know, things like that, but you can't use that money to pay for child services for help. That's a real barrier to bringing younger people on, on boards and committees, which is a huge problem, because I think, I'm so proud of this board because we do have a diversity of age and gender. We're, we're really considered to be a young board, you know, most of us, some of us. I meant to say some of us.
Thanks, Claire. I appreciate it, Claire.
But, but other towns don't have that and they can't attract younger people to the board because of those issues. So I think that that's something that, that should definitely be spoken about. It's awkward for us to say it as the select board.
We say it as the finance board then? There should be this investigation at least into what other towns do?
Sure, I think that's a great idea. We do get, occasionally we get the email that says, you know, we pay your salary and, and I think that some people think that this is a full-time job, you know? We do get calls looking for us sometimes during the day, like, so I think it's also important that people understand that this, this is more, more than a volunteer job, more than, you know, but not a full-time job either. All right. Anything else on that? We've got the finance committee and reserve fund.
It's really to see.
So.
That's how we do.
So this, I don't know which line I did this, I'm sorry. It's in there. It is page eight, it's $2,000. It's to cover for recording secretary for minutes. It's level funded for the current year based on past trends. Reserve fund, which finance committee maintains control over, was adjusted, we bumped it up to 100 during COVID, it came down to 80 in fiscal '23, and we're just recommending, no, was that?
No, it actually started out at $100,000 this year, but we made, it was a $20,000 transfer because of the ceiling of weights and measures.
Oh, so we need to adjust this.
That's why it looks like it's 80, but it started out at 100.
So this is just putting it back to where it's been for the past few years.
Seems administrative to me.
And then the last one's council, which is a 2.9% increase, just reflective of the new proposed fee schedule. I don't think council's fee has been increased in seven, six years. So we have a very good rate with them. This covers all legal services for the town, general, for the town specifically, not the schools, general legal counsel, litigation, labor, so.
Is this including for the schools too, or is that?
No, that's, that's carried in their, in their budget. But even just for the town, a lot of it is through, you know, a retainer, we get an enormous amount of value from MeTal or Minacosta. So they've been, you know, if you, if we had to employ that amount of attorneys in-house, we'd have a more structural bracketing of it. So they do, they do a great job. So it's a reasonable proposal in my opinion.
Well, if there are no other questions, comments, thank you everyone for being here. It's a long night. Great questions, great discussion. I hope you can watch this at home because it's very interesting. I appreciate the department heads really giving us the time. Sometimes we're in such a rush to get through it that we really don't really talk about what the value is that they're providing and some of the successes that they've had. So it's a good opportunity for us to show our appreciation and also the people at home that are watching this to learn a little bit more about local government. So if nobody has anything else, do you want to have the finance committee make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Or we'll go next?
Motion for adjourn, just before.
Second, Natalie.
There we go. Let's go to the list. We'll just start at the end of the table. You don't have to do that. You're, you're in real life. You can just.
We're all here, we can see each other.
It's been a long time. Can I have a show of the answer for everyone who votes to adjourn? Yes. Thank you all.
And select board, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Roger.
Second, Stacey.
Roger and Stacey, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you Wednesday.